And we're using Teams, how which is better?
So we're just trying to set up the video camera and for some reason we can't get it to show the same picture or really to render anything. Oh, no. Yes, is it turned on the next time?
We've got you then.
Hey Nicole or Jennifer, can I confirm you guys can hear us online?
Beautifully.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you so much.
Trying to work out our last little kinks in this new system. Can you guys see okay with this camera?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks great.
Just let me, just let me know when, John.
We have quorum, right?
Sounds good. Can you hear me out there? Welcome everyone to the, actually Nicole, talk, you keep talking. I don't think we can hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh yeah, it's quiet. We can hear you. Okay. Okay, welcome everyone. It's seven oh one and it's time for the September seventeenth, twenty twenty four B O T meeting. Yeah, we, we can scoot in if you want. Luke might be here. I don't know if he's coming or not. Not sure, but Macy, when you're ready, you can call the roll. All right, we're going to test audio and then we'll call roll.
All right, Nicole, can you give it a try one more time, please?
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. Testing.
Oh, there you go.
Testing.
That is very good.
We got it. Thank you so much. Appreciate your help. Are you ready for me?
Yeah, go ahead and call roll.
All right.
When you're ready.
Mayor Billy.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sterling.
Here.
Trustee Corvalon.
Sorry, I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee Larson.
Here.
Trustee Maris.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
And trustee Ty.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. With that, we'll go into our consent agenda. Any questions at all on the, on the items in the consent agenda? Okay, good. Let's direct them probably to John.
I made a mistake on the resolution for E V charging and thank you to trustee Maris for finding it for us, but in the resolution I put forty cents for level two instead of thirty two cents as was the direction last time. And so I think what we need to do is take that item off consent agenda and then we can amend it and approve it just as a action, right, correct?
That sounds good. So I move to, do we have to make a motion to get that off the consent agenda? Have it in my head that we do because I've only done this.
Yes.
I moved to, to move the E V charging rates item off the consent agenda into the, into the regular meeting as an action item. We got motion in a second. Macy, when you're ready.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
And trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there other questions on either the warrants, the minutes, or the ARPO mental health agreement and M O U? If no questions, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
And trustee Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into staff reports and talk to John. I don't think we have any, any embedded needs for direction for this town staff in the staff reports this week, except for one item.
Yeah, I apologize. This isn't my staff report. It just came up today. We have a issue over by Blue Owl Books on the street over there. And as you know, that, that's a unpaved street. And when there is a significant weather event where we have a lot of water coming down, it washes out into that culvert and backs it up. And it really causes all of the dirt on that street to go into the Blue Owl bookstore parking lot. That has been something that we've been planning to pave for quite some time. It's been on our plan for a while and it just hasn't quite been finished. And so when this concern was brought to me by the property owner, we started looking at that street and it does cause a huge impact on town staff to take care of it and to keep that culvert clean under the highway there. And our street supervisor, Josh, got some information about how we might be able to pave it and sculpt the street to try to keep the water going in the right way. And this would have two really good effects. One, it would keep that culvert cleaner because we're not going to be washing the street out into it all the time. And two, we can channel that water away from Blue Owl Books. I don't know if you're familiar with that intersection, but there is a great difference there for their business and it's fairly significant. And so if we could protect that building just a little bit more, I think it would be ideal. Josh got a quote from the people that we do asphalt work with regularly for about twenty thousand dollars. And that would include the installation of a little concrete culvert just along the edge of that property and then doing the asphalt on that street. So it'd just be from Jefferson there to the highway. And this is something that I think would help the whole community. It would help our maintenance needs. And the reason I'm bringing it to you tonight is because if we're going to do it, we need to get it done before it gets too cold to put asphalt down. Our finance policies say that there is a little bit of latitude on my end to pick whether we could do an R F P or if we could just take estimates. This is ultimately a very simple project. It doesn't even really require engineering. All we're doing is installing a little bit of a drain and then getting the asphalt work done. And so what I'd really like to do is find direction from you to get quotes and I'd get three is kind of like what the policy says or more if I could and bring that back to you. We're anticipating twenty thousand dollars of work, probably not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars of work. We have a couple of budgeted line items in the streets fund that have not been utilized yet. And so I would need to work with Rita, but we would want to come back to you on October first with a plan about how we could get this work done. If you guys would give us that direction to go ahead and move forward with the project.
I will say when Mark, who were the previous streets manager, when he had his streets plan, that little section of Spring Street is, is, is one of the places that was to be repaved, basically. If I'm not mistaken.
Is, can we possibly, at least to help Blue Owl, like put up sandbags or something just to temporarily block it if it happens?
Chud, Chud gets up. So Kim has talked to me about this. Not only does the stuff get into their parking lot, but the water actually enters the store.
Yeah, no, I've heard him say that.
So when it rains, they race from Eldora to Nether to put out sandbags, which they have there at the readies. But it's a good idea, whether the town could do that to help in the interim or whether they have kept them there since the last flash.
I think we could get this done by, by November, by first snow, if we are able to move quickly.
Okay.
So the, the contractor we use, I think it really, if, you know, we need to get, this is enough money that we should get quotes at minimum. But the contractor we typically use for asphalt work has said that they could complete the work, you know, before we get too cold to put asphalt down. And it will really help this winter because, you know, all that runoff, that culvert is just going to back up. We also did have been working in Old Town and there was a piece of culvert that had been blocked by rocks because somebody was trying to dam it up a little bit. And so that was causing some issues with sheeting coming down. So the water wasn't coming through the right way. So they have been vacuuming out culverts and cleaning stuff out and making it, you know, making sure everything's working properly. But this piece of it is kind of like where a lot of the water comes out. So I think if we fix this ultimately, it's going to have a positive effect on the whole neighborhood.
Oh, sure. Yeah, no, I'm with you on that for sure.
Hey, John, you said there were three line items or so that we would take from and what were, what are those line items? In other words, what won't we be paying for in order to address this issue?
I think that there are contingencies mostly. There was, there's a infrastructure line item that has fifty thousand dollars in it. That was for culvert primarily, but the culvert that we're anticipating purchasing, we're, we're not going to be buying this year. And so it could be from there. There's also a dust suppression line item that has twenty thousand dollars in it. And that is something that I, we talked to Josh about a little bit. He doesn't think we're going to need dust suppression this fall. And if we do, he thinks they can handle it with this water truck. So I think that there is a couple of opportunities, but what I'd really like to do is, this kind of came up very suddenly. I'd like to talk to Rita about it, who is here this evening, just so that we can make sure that we, we have a good financial plan moving forward for how we could accomplish it. But on first glance, it does look like we have the budget to take care of this without, without robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yep, no, that, that all makes sense.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was, I would definitely give a nod for you to go and get quotes and, and see where that takes us.
That's.
This is Tanya. I have a nod. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And with that, are there any other questions on the other staff reports or John's for that matter, other items in staff reports?
Yeah, just a few quick things. Great job, everyone, on the Searse insurance passing. That's amazing. And I know it becomes just a, a regular year after year, you know, amazing this thing, but just a call out on that. So John, when will the multimodal plan be done? We were tracking towards an end date of July of this year. But I don't know that we've heard of any updates of when it's actually going to be done, done.
Yeah, you have a update on your comp plan and there is a mobility. There's some congruency there. So you'll hear a little bit about this tonight. We had a meeting today. And I think that there has been a little bit of ongoing discussion about a couple of intersections. One is Eldora and seventy two and like whether or not what that traffic movement needs to look like right there. And there has been some conversations about the streets downtown and whether we want to go with one-way streets or two-way streets and specifically Snyder Street and how that should function in the plan. And so my understanding is we're actually relatively close on the, the multimodal transit plan and we should be able to bring that back soon. And I will get a firm date when that can be on the agenda here. I can, I can follow up on that one.
That would be fantastic. Thank you. Extra security for court. Is that, are we, do we have a problem when, with our court dates or is that just a precautionary thing? Could you elucidate a little bit more on that?
Sure. So I think when the original contract with the B C S O was completed, what it basically says is that there's not an emergency or priority job somewhere else that a deputy can be here to be that marshal. And that has in practice turned out to mean that there is no marshal, except for very infrequently. And that's okay. I think for now, we haven't had a problem. But I think that the concern is with increasing court cases, which we've seen a little bit. They just worry about the security there. And there's a couple of ways it could be addressed. Of course, Troy used to have a post certification. He could, he could go through that process again. Or we could contract it out or maybe, you know, we're talking to the B C S O about their contract in the next meeting. And so that's something that we could discuss further, but it's something that we need, it's not a best practice to not have a marshal. But it's also something that maybe are, we haven't really seen a significant safety problem yet, but it's one of those things that's going to, you know, you just want to prepare for that eventuality.
Okay, gotcha. Huge shout out to Josh and the streets team. You guys are really getting at that whole summer repair plan. I see culverts being repaired. Big storm, you know, the storm came through and there was repaired going on in the, especially in our dirt roads. So I can just see, I can just see a progress from the previous team with Josh now at the helm. I, I just, I see progress. So just a shout out to them and the team. Okay, so I got the update on where the safer, or the safer main streets. It's out to bid.
It's sorry, not, yeah, not quite. It's in concurrence with C dot. So they should sign off on it probably. Like maybe even this week, we should almost have it. And then the bid documents are completed. So what we'll do is this project doesn't involve a lot of concrete, so we may be able to bid it out and do part of it this fall and part of it in the spring. But either way, the engineering work is completed. We're shovel ready design. We're just waiting on C dot.
Seat out to sign off. Okay. And we have a contractor to do the work?
We need to put this project out for bid. And so that would be the next step. So we'll put it out over the, the, right? Yeah.
Okay, so bid documents are ready to go. And that's what that means. Okay. And then on tips, the, that, that program.
That project is, is delayed more than I'd like it to be. And it basically boils down to there are federal requirements for that money to be spent that I think in previous times, maybe we're not as well understood as they should be. And so it really boils down to how we get temporary easements to do some of the sidewalk work that's required near town hall. And so this, this is something that J V A is actively working on. They need a special kind of negotiator to get those contracts so that it can comply with federal law. There's something called the Uniform Act. So anytime there's federal money being spent, you can't, you have to have negotiations with property owners in a very specific way. And so that has delayed the project a little bit, but it shouldn't be too long. I had a meeting with J V A this week already. And they told me that they have identified some people who could do that work and they can handle it through their subcontracting process. So it won't really impact the town. They just need to bring that person on board. And then once that's complete, the engineering is largely completed. So it will just go through the same concurrent process, concurrent process with C dot. And then as soon as that's done, we're likely looking at a bid time of next spring. But I did talk, we talked to F H W A and all the relevant stakeholders and that, that's fine. As long as the design is done by next summer, we should be okay.
Is this process going to require additional funds that we didn't allocate?
It will, and it's, it shouldn't be dramatic though. I don't think it'll impact the overall project completion.
Okay. Okay, but there will be an additional cost than what we were anticipating.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't have the best information for you yet because J V A, it, it's something J V A needs to provide the town with. It's part of their services that they were doing here. So it could, there, there's probably a delta, but I don't know exactly what it is yet, but I will bring that back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I'll punt it over to other folks that have questions about the staff reports.
Hi, this is Tanya. Thanks Nicole for, that was a good in-depth. I didn't even see that in the packet, what you guys were talking about.
Yeah.
I want, I also didn't see about the, having a marshal at court dates. I didn't see it. I was looking for it just now. And I'm curious why that wouldn't just be part of our contract? Why we wouldn't just have B C S O during those time periods? Why can't we just schedule that? Why do we get?
We're not fully staffed for one reason.
Right. I, I think that this has been more challenging than originally anticipated to set this up the right way. Attorney Madsen and I just met with Sergeant Mendez about kind of things and how they're working and especially the coresponder program because we're really looking for ways to continue that program because we think it's very critical for this community that Lynette continue to be able to serve here. And one of the things that we talked about is this, well, really this contract conversation that we need to have at our next meeting. I think what we need to do is just remember that, you know, you can't fully anticipate everything that could happen and every challenge. And I think one of the things that, that has come up is that having deputies here all the time, what we really need is we need to make sure that we have deputies here to respond when we need them. And we may, maybe need to just spell out what that looks like. But I did meet with Sheriff Johnson as well about two weeks ago. And he told me that he's willing to amend the And he told me that he's willing to amend the contract as necessary to make it work for us. So we just need to. I think in this next conversation we have really identify where, you know, there's been some conversation about having more deputies here at nighttime. And, and just kind of how they're serving in the community. And that's what we really need to have a good discussion about at the BOT level. So we can amend the service level.
When are we going to have that conversation next month, you said?
It's scheduled for October 1st.
Perfect. And can we then discuss the idea of like? If we know when we have these court dates, because they're scheduled to schedule to have a marshal that we've already paid for to be there. So it's not extra cost to us.
That's what I would like to do. I think that's the best option is just to spell it out a little better.
I think so too. I mean, we can't afford extra, extra upon extra of these days. So. Okay. Well, I, I appreciate Nicole, your deep dive in there. Thank you. And, and Jonathan for your time answering. I don't have any other questions.
Any questions from folks in the, in the room? I would say too, to Josh and the Streets team that Old Town's looking good. They've been doing a lot of good work in there.
Yeah, here, here. I watched them do it all day, man.
Before, over and before the weekend, over the weekend and the last couple of days.
Well, Mayor Bailey, if none of the other trustees have any questions, I do have a couple of more that I want to bounce off John real quick.
Go for it.
Okay. Hey, John, is Peter on?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay. Um, question, because I had seen in his staff report that he wanted to put the tourism draft on Engage Netherlands. My, my concern with that is that before this is, he would be doing that before doing the community outreach on it and also having it go before the boards again. We've been caught in that situation in previous times where we've put something out there and people think that that is the done, done plan. Um, and so I was just curious as to if that's what Peter meant that he is going to put it up on Engage Netherlands and then how he will. Mitigate against people thinking that that's a done, done plan.
I've asked Peter to use Engage Netherlands slightly differently than it has been in the past, to use it as an online engagement tool to get feedback about things. And so I think what he intends to do is to talk about the process. And one of the things I'd noted, I think when the staff turnover happens. There was a lot going on and the Engage Netherlands page wasn't updated as frequently as it needed to be. And so Peter and I have been talking about that and he's been actively working to get the page kind of caught up to where it needs to be. Because there had actually been quite a bit of engagement about the tourism plan and what had happened at the boards. That wasn't reflected on the page. And so I agree with you. We don't want to present a plan that's looking like it's a done thing because I think that what we heard at the last. Board of Trustees meeting specifically is that there needs to be some additional thought and engagement around the goals of that plan. And so to that end, Peter and I are meeting on Thursday morning to kind of go over the plan and to make our next kind of steps. And what I'd like to do is make sure that Engage Netherlands has some good input points for the public so that they know. We're talking about this and this is when and how you might engage with us. Because we really need to, I think, just work to develop those goals a little bit further. So I think that was the intention is to like, just make sure that we've got a good public portal about what's happening. So it doesn't look like. A, the project died, or B, that it's happening in a vacuum. But we're happy to change that approach if you think it'd be better.
If what you say, if you're wanting to use it as an engagement tool, totally fine with that. And to say that this is a draft in the works. It, you know, it doesn't necessarily have any timelines associated, which is what we've typically, how we've typically set up our projects. Um, I think that's fine. And especially if it also incorporated feedback that has already been received on the plan. I think that would help that folks realize that this is still in the works.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and then there was a request in his report on whether, and direction on spending money on ADA tools for the website.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize. I missed, when we were talking at the beginning, I, we didn't get that one discussed. So here's the situation with that. I can give you a really high level thing. The state changed the ADA accessibility rules for websites. And for state websites, that had to be met early this summer on the first of June, June or July. And we are currently complying because we're a municipality and we have language that allows us to accommodate people who have different needs on the website. But by next year, same time, we need to have a fully accessible website and those standards are difficult to achieve. So what Peter is requesting is a piece of software that will allow us to ensure. Fairly good. You can't be, there's never a perfect compliance, but you can be pretty confident that you're 90 plus, which is really what you're looking for. Because one of the problems that can happen is there's a huge liability issue for every single instance of. Non-compliant code that you can find on the website. So what I'd like to do is look at purchasing that software. There is a way to purchase it, it now, and we'd start paying on the next budget cycle, which could be a good thing, but it's, you know, it would be approving something out of budget. Cycle. So that's where the question is. But what we need to do, and we can bring this back for another board item too. But we need to look at getting that software. The other thing that we should consider is upgrading our website. To a better platform that's designed for municipal websites. That could potentially replace our Engage Netherlands website and a lot of our other engagement tools. Where the cost may be a moot point. And Peter has a meeting with, with a vendor. Which is kind of thought to be the best one in the industry, really. Um, on Friday to see what that cost would be. But that request, I think what he's asking for is to purchase, or at least. He's, he's just asking about whether or not we can move forward with an ADA accessibility tool. So he can complete the work.
Yeah. So I, me personally, um, is, I would, because we've talked. A couple of iterations about upgrading the website. And if upgrading the website makes, brings in those ADA tools, is it just a part of the suite of tools? I would rather investigate that than to piecemeal it off into ADA tools. But the other thing I would say is, because this is something that I have to pay very close attention to. Is this ADA accessibility piece is, um, there are some free tools that could probably get us by. If we're looking at the rest of this year, but then seeing what the upgrading in the website might look like for next year.
Yeah, we're using some of the PDF tools now. The bigger problem is. I think you're probably on the right track. Maybe what I would say is. We might've had that request for direction in there prematurely. We could add this to an agenda item and bring it back. So we'll have the, all the quotes for the website. In October. Well, I guess after Friday.
Yeah. And is the website vendor Civic Plus?
Yes. There's also Granicus is the other big one in the space, but. I don't know if you have a preference, but we're happy to look at both or, or other things too.
The only thing I would suggest is if Granicus or Civic Plus offers complimentary tools that we would. Potentially want to invest in the future. So whether that's being able to record. Meetings and we can get minutes spit out as a result of that. So that's the only thing, the only guidance I would provide, but you guys can look at that yourselves.
We also, we use Civics Plus for municode. They own municode and that's a tool that Macy uses for all our ordinances. So we would get some cost savings if we were inside their ecosystem.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Yeah. So that, that's just my guidance. That's my personal preference. But if other trustees have different perspectives, please, please let us know. Um, and then, uh, Netherlands 50, do we have any, John, did we take a look at? I guess I should look in the, the finance, but whether or not our sales tax or it might not be reported yet, whether or not the sales spiked.
Sales taxes, two months in, in back or whatever. So we'll see it soon.
That was, that would be what I'd be most interested to know if, whether or not those events like that actually create more business for our businesses. So just a little pulse that I'd like us to keep, keep on.
I think it's really hard. It's hard for us to know, like, if you have a summer concert series, that particular date. Because it all goes into the coffers and we don't, because that's. You don't get the, right? Am I right? Or you don't.
You know. Rita is nodding her head. Yes, you're right.
Yeah, it makes it difficult. That would be another advantage to Home Roll, I guess. Is there a reason why there's not a Parks report?
There is a Parks report.
There is. I didn't see it.
It starts around page 87. I had a question on it actually. It says, secure funding to improve ADA accessibility at Peter Park by upgrading equipment, playground equipment by next month. Is that? There's no, I don't see a status.
I think that was part of her plan and I honestly think in the transition that got delayed a little bit. So I think we can bring that idea back. That is something that needs to be. That's something that needs to happen. And I'll follow up with Nikki and we can present a, a thing on that.
Great. Thank you.
I would like to see the Parks report separate from State's report in the future.
We can hear you separate from the what?
The streets. Isn't it all together?
Oh, it's Parks and Public Works. It is. It goes in, it goes kind of in order. It's streets, streets, parks and then utilities.
Now that we have a Parks department, they should have their own report.
I think it'd be reasonable to put all three of those reports apart. We are working on dashboards for everybody so that these reports have a little bit of consistency. And I think that would be great. So I will bring next meet, next version of this, we will. Continue to play with that. Additionally, if there's anything in these reports that you'd like to see from a dashboard perspective of things you'd always like to know or. Or things, I'd like to make sure that we're talking about that as staff. So we're incorporating that into the reports to be useful.
Honestly, I've always wanted a, just a, the strategical, like almost like a grid, a table. Instead of them being broken up in each one of the departments, just a high level sheet or like a. You know, the first page of everyone's staff reports, the goal and whether or not it's hit, or at least an update on when it's anticipating to be hit. Because I find that I constantly have to flip between, okay, what's on the strategic goals? So like, Tanya, you're like, hey, that was in depth. It's because I'm, I'm bouncing everything off our strategic goals. And seeing where the report is in staff reports or where it's not. And so just that table of the strategic goals would be super helpful. So we can just look at it at a glance.
I will try to incorporate that for the next meeting and see if we can get some more feedback to make sure we keep perfecting that.
Thank you.
I have a quick one on. The utilities stuff for Andrew. I know one of our objectives is modernizing towns infrastructure, reduce public safety risks, promote economic growth, improve quality of life. I think what something we could do, I know we need to replace our generator up by Indian Peaks. And I had a suggestion from a neighbor about seeing what the kilowatt load capacity is there. And if we could get a grant to do solar and batteries. As, as the backup power for that instead of the generator. So.
We are actively working on a project to do that with like a microgrid project, like kind of what you're talking about. There's also a geothermal option for that. And so we are, there's been some requests for that kind of. Resiliency and other parts of the town as well. You may know, this building has a microgrid that's not quite attached yet. So we're going to be meeting with our new representative from Excel to see if we can get that connected and to continue that work in some of our other. Vulnerable areas.
Yeah. I think that'd be really, just like a really cool thing for us to do to, you know, replace a big diesel generator with.
I think the one thing about that system, you probably still have to have a generator backup system because just in case the batteries are depleted, you still have to have that. That secondary thing, but it doesn't have to maybe. It, it just wouldn't have to run as much and it might be a smaller generator. So.
Yeah, or just, you know, yeah. Yeah, just without knowing the load, it's hard to know what we have to do.
And this would be a great thing to bring up during the strategic goals. Plan because if it's not a part of our goals, then some of these things can get, you know, dropped off or you can just forget about them. So. Definitely bring it back up Luke.
Yeah, for sure. And, and trying to find out like a timeline for that of, you know, I know you're already talking to our Excel. Team, but.
Wouldn't that be a sustainability board objective?
Yeah, I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
Why would it be on our, our list of stuff to do?
Well, just we have to pay for it.
Well, the other thing, one thing I'd like to.
And they can come to us with the budget and ask us like, doesn't have to be on our list. They could come to us and say, this is what we need. Bring an agenda item and see if we can afford it in the budget.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I mean, the, the, the.
Goals, but it could be in their goals.
Yeah.
It's helpful for staff if those. If we do get some direction from the BOT on those goals. Because the boards are advisory boards and they really need to be taking the direction from the Board of Trustees. And their work plans should be approved and sometimes directed by the Board of Trustees. And so I think what. What this, I think you're right. This, the SAB could do a lot of this work, but I do want to make sure that. I'm, I'm keeping the BOT making, you know, you're the, the primary decision-making board for the town. And I do want to really. Enforce that with our other boards that when they're making recommendations, they're making them to you and that. That you can tell them, these are priorities of the town because we really want their work to align with the comp plan so that all of our plans kind of. Flow together. And I think we can do that in a way that makes sense.
And yeah, and I'm on SAP, so I'd, I'd love to bring it up to them, but we haven't met in a while because a lot of us haven't been able to. Just make the, make the time to meet, but I would love to bring that up to him at the next meeting.
Yeah. And I, I was envisioning this really as a, you know, just kind of like a, like a flag waving opportunity for the town to, you know, to promote some of our. Green initiatives, you know, and I think, you know. In the wake of our rights of nature stuff, like it'd be nice to have some stuff we could. Champion about how we've done, you know, some great things for environmentally. So.
We did identify a new sustainability coordinator candidate and that person is currently working their way through the hiring process. We anticipate them being onboarded probably within the next week or so. So that'll help with those efforts.
Awesome.
Yeah, it would be good. I mean, for sake of all the different advisory boards of. Lot, they can become rather siloed. And yeah, if they're kind of really operating more. In a collaborative effort with us, with our strategic plan, present and future. That does seem like we'll get to a better place. John and I met with Andrew Doer and we're planning to do that with the DDA. To have a joint meeting with them soon and really for the DDA and the BOT to talk through priorities and then. The DDA would help, you know, help the DDA focus on them. But it'd be good for all the boards to really be doing that. And more questions? Are we, so I see Andrew's number two. So did we not get the money for that? That water well development. Objective number two. Towns Water writes this. Towns Water, Colorado Water Plan, page 90. Colorado Water Plan Staff will not be recommending the town's application to fund the proposed water well development project. For added water resiliency and we're going to meet with them.
Yeah.
More feedback.
I think there's been a lot of questions about whether those, those will actually work the way intended. We may need to just flush them out, the idea out a little bit more and just do a little bit exploratory work. But I do think that's accurate at this time.
Okay. And we're going to get, it looks like we're going to get our. You know, revised water sewer rates and, you know, the study on the plant investment fees. We're going to learn more about that next month.
Yes, on the 15th.
And they, from what I've seen, people going around our neighborhood, not people, but the contractor, the, the boring or whatever, the potholing for. Checking the pipes for lead seems to be fairly quick. It's super loud. So have your earplugs ready when they're. But oh, that's all right. But they, they're also pretty quick. You know, they seem to be pretty, they did two folks right near us and.
We're a third of the way through and we have had a higher failure rate than anticipated because there's giant boulders everywhere.
Can you explain failure rate? That does not mean lead.
Yeah. So basically when they're digging, some of the lines are just. Are deep and you know, and the mountains, rocks just kind of percolate up through the ground. And sometimes there's boulders where they didn't used to be boulders. So. They've had some trouble getting to the actual pipe. But today they started a new process where they went from the valve and they're digging the bore hole right along the line of the valve. Which in theory allows them to hit that pipe a lot easier. And that was successful today. So I think we're 30% through the project. I think we need to identify 50 lines. For sure. They found zero lead so far in anything, which is good and kind of matches our anecdotal knowledge about the pipes. So it sounds like the contractor believes that we're going to hit the target and that it shouldn't be a problem. And I think the work is, is. Is moving on schedule, if not a little ahead of schedule. They're doing pretty good. So.
So to be clear to everyone, failure does not mean lead. It just means they weren't able to actually find the pipe. So a hundred percent of the pipes they found have not had lead in them.
Correct.
Any more questions or comments? Any more questions or comments? If not, we can move on to the BOT reports. So any questions or comments on the BOT reports? And Tanya, you were going to give a verbal report?
Yeah, I was. But, I mean, honestly, we had a meeting where we discussed bringing in a consultant, the same one that's doing our comprehensive plan. And having them do a very smaller version for the NDDA, and they just went into discussion, and there wasn't really anything. That was. There was really no conclusion. So there's really nothing to report, to be honest with you.
Okay. I'll give one. So we did have a big spring egress walking tour that several of us, almost many, most all of us were here in the room for the intro. And then at least half of us went for that walk for, to look at the routes, and I was there for the, for the entire thing for all three routes, or really two and a half, so we kind of blew off one of them. But, um, so they're working through those options. They sent us, we're going to meet tomorrow, I think, and, and kind of talk through those options and kind of next steps, and then there'll be public engagement will be the next big step. So we'll bring it to the public probably in this room, and we'll talk about the the egress routes in depth and kind of the new updated ones from, from a month ago. And there's been, they kind of are evaluating them differently this time around. There's, there's the engineering study and the engineering evaluation, then there's going to be the community evaluation, which includes the professionals like the fire department and the county and the, and the bigger entities involved, so, so their perspectives as well. And then the public will really weigh in during the event here, and, you know, we'll use that to help us get more information to grade these different options. So that'll be coming, we'll be learning more about that very soon. Anything else folks want to talk about? I was on a panel for the Colorado Water Congress discussing the rights of nature resolutions, just kind of our perspective on that, and the, someone from the St. Vrain Left Hand Water Conservation Board was there too, kind of talking about their perspective, which was really pretty related to how lions ended up with their rights of nature light. So it was it was an interesting conference to go to for sure, to talk, learn about water rights, very interesting mix of people there around the state, and it was really interesting, cool to be part of that panel discussion, too. If there's no more questions or comments on BOT reports, then we will go on to our next and first information item on the count plan. John, I'm going to default to you. I'm not looking too hard unless Britt's up there.
Mayor and trustees, we have members from SE Group here who are doing.
Oh, gosh.
So they are going to give us a little presentation, and Aiden, I think.
Yep.
Okay.
Hi. Yeah, so today I would, I just have a verbal report based on the update I sent earlier. But yeah, for the last six to eight weeks or so, our team has been deep in the draft writing phase. So we are preparing the draft chapters and in preparation for our public plant, sorry, public plan presentation on October 10th. So that will represent the last formal public engagement opportunity for this plan before it goes into draft finalization and subsequent adoption. During that presentation, we will have given the public an opportunity to review the draft, and then we will go through kind of describe the planned framework, provide a little bit of the background information, and then summarize the strategies that we are recommending be part of the plan. So each chapter will have its own topic area or have its own focus and background there. So we've been working with Peter and the team to get our timeline down for the engagement. We will have materials by the 26th for press releases, flyers, online information. And then we'll have the draft available on the Engaged Net site on September 30th, so giving people a bit over a week to review that, but know that there will be a very digestible presentation as part of that October 10th date. It was asked earlier about some of the timing for these planning documents. And our timeline right now has us hoping for that adoption at the December 2024 meeting. So basically the last BOT meeting before Christmas, where we are hoping to have all of these reviewed, finalized, and adopted. That's, that's what we're going towards. Any questions on that general project process?
Questions for Aiden? There appear to be no questions, Aiden.
Yeah, so the, just a little bit more on the chapter statuses. So you'll see in this list. We have land use, housing, economic development, arts and culture, recreation, health, human and social services, resilience, natural resources and hazards, transportation and utilities and facilities. So most of these are in a draft form. Utilities and facilities just got finished up today. So my next task is to hand these over to John for an initial review, and what we have requested is that the initial review not be, you know, necessarily like very wordsmithy, but more just making sure that none of the strategies are problematic initially, or that there's any factually incorrect information to really let the public and the various boards and everybody else who will be invited to that meeting provide that baseline feedback. So we, the resilience section, you will, you will see during this plan presentation that we've used the framework of resilience to really tie through all of the other planned chapters. So we've introduced a couple different ways of thinking about resilience, and then all of the strategies tie back to, you know, how does this increase some element of resilience in our town? So that won't be necessarily a standalone chapter, but sort of an initial framework as part of the introduction. The other thing that's not on this list that probably should be on this list is the downtown subarea plan. And that is also in draft form, and there have been conversations around working with DDA and town staff to look through the implementation table and make sure that we have all those like responsibilities and roles described correctly. So John has been a part of those conversations and has been doing a really great job connecting the dots between everything.
Aiden, can you talk a little bit about some of the kind of synergy between the multimodal plan and the subarea plan specifically, and that kind of the interconnections of those documents and some of the things we've just been talking about related in that multimodal space?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So as you know, the multimodal plan is also ongoing. Farron Peers and SE Group are working collaboratively, collaborator, oh my gosh, collaboratively on both of those documents. So we have really made sure that all of the downtown subarea recommendations are following the most recent edits and changes to the things like the roundabouts or the crossings. And I think I really see the mobility plan. You know, transportation mobility has so many intersections. So I think like things like sidewalks and economic development and events, like they all have, you know, they all cross over. So making sure that we're thinking through, you know, if we have First Street closed for an event, how will people move through the town and find parking? If we want to create more public space by having larger sidewalks and outdoor activities, how does that affect people moving around on the sidewalks and the streets? So we're really making sure to have that collaboration between these two processes. And think about all the changes to potentially making, you know, more one-way streets or adapting some of the street flow, making sure that we're thinking about the, the full effects of those changes. So yeah, John, anything else there?
No, we had a question earlier, and I think this really, what she just said is one of the reasons why the multimodal plan hasn't come for adoption yet, because we really, that subarea plan is so critical kind of to the, to making sure the multimodal plan is correct. And in your opinion, that's kind of where we're at, right, is just making sure we're in alignment. And there, today our conversation was really around what shoots are one-way, what shoots are two-way? How do we divert traffic through downtown and make sure people are pointed in the right ways so that we avoid congestion at some of the places that we know that that occurs? We've also had a recent property owner near Eldora reach out about whether or not there's room for a potential roundabout there. And so that's the other piece of the multimodal plan. We had originally thought we weren't having enough space to put a roundabout in that intersection, but there may be. So we're trying to just kind of like bring together some of those bits and pieces, I think is really the, the last piece of this work. So I think they're kind of tracking together. Aiden, do you think that's a fair statement?
Yep, yep, absolutely. And I think it would be a missed opportunity for the multimodal transportation plan to come out and then have the downtown subarea say something different or vice versa. So I think really making sure that we are collaborating is important here. And just some of the ideas to fill everyone else in that we were chatting about today is, you know, as we're looking at some of these town-owned parcels or opportunity parcels, what other amenities could we put there that also help things like providing, you know, place making and event space that could really, you know, encourage that vibrancy in the downtown. So again, making sure that that coordinates with the transportation and that we're thinking about things like street widths and sidewalks.
More questions for Aiden?
Yeah, this is Tanya. I have a question. The subarea plan, is that an add-on feature for the comprehensive plan, or is there going to be like a, a small version of it?
Oh, good question. So there will be two separate documents, but they will speak to each other. So the subarea plan will be a standalone document that you could, you know, take completely separately from the comp plan, and it would still make sense. The comprehensive plan will reference the subarea plan, especially on things like economic development, land use, and some of those, you know, design standards that we've been talking about. So you'll see eventually in the, in the strategies that say, you know, reference the downtown subarea plan for this. So two separate documents, but we'll speak to each other.
Great. Thank you so much.
More questions? Good. Looks like everyone in the room is content.
So please, please, please put October 10th from five to seven on your calendar.
We will. Thank you so much, Aiden. Appreciate you, your work and your team's work very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
You bet. And so next on our agenda is our action, I think now items, we've gone from one to two. Screwed. We, let's go ahead with the National Electric Code first, and then we'll insert the EV charging. Jeffrey?
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor and Trustees, Jennifer Madsen, Town Attorney. So before you tonight is ordinance 866. And ordinance 866 is the adoption by reference of the National Electrical Code 2023 Edition. And it, this ordinance 866 amends the Netherlands Municipal Code to adopt that National Electric Code by reference. The Colorado General Assembly has established the State Electrical Board and sets duties and responsibilities for that State Electrical Board. The State Electrical Board is required to adopt state standards governing the construction, repairs, additions in the installation of wiring, apparatus and equipment for electrical, light, heat, and power. The State Electrical Board is required to adopt the most current edition of the National, National Electrical Code. And Colorado law mandates that after the State Electrical Board adopts this most current version of the Electrical Code, that local governments are also supposed to follow suit and adopt the same version of the National, National Electrical Code or some stricter requirement. The National Electrical Code is really a benchmark for safe electrical design, installation and inspection. In the summer of 2023, the Electrical Board adopted the 2023 edition of the National Electrical Code to be effective on August 1. And so the town really needs to adopt this 2023 edition of the National Electrical Code. This is an adoption by reference. The Board of Trustees approved this ordinance on first reading, which is required for an adoption by reference at an earlier meeting on August 20th. And so now this is the second reading of the ordinance, and if the Board of Trustees approves it, it will be then adopted. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Any clarifying questions for Jennifer? Doesn't sound like it. So we'll go to public comment. First, we'll go in the room. Any public comments on National Electric Code? None in the room? Folks online, any public comments on the National Electric Code adoption? Hearing and seeing none, we'll bring it back to the room for discussion and a motion. For your reference, motions are on page 115.
Seen this once before?
Seen it before.
Uncontroversial. I move to approve ordinance number 866 and ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Netherlands, Colorado, adopting by reference the National Electric Code 2023 Edition and amending sections 18 dash, I think that's an I, A6 of the Netherlands Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? If not, Macy?
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalan?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's approved.
Thanks, everyone. So the motion is approved and passes. So with that, we'll go back to we'll bring, bring forward our newest action item that was a consent item for those of you who are sitting on late. The Fee Schedule Amendment to the EV Charging Rates. John realized there was, there was a typo that we want to address and we need to amend it. That's why we brought it here. So, John?
The amendment should read for the Level 2 charger, 32 cents per kilowatt hour instead of 40 cents, and then the Level 3 is correct at 50 cents. So the motion can remain the same, just swapping 32 cents for where it says 40.
So the aim is on page 45. And the motions? And the motions? Not motions, I guess, one would surmise from page forty-five. Any, um, clarifying questions for John on, on this? Hearing none, uh, we'll go to folks in the room, comments on the, the fixing or updating our, uh, rates for the EV charging? No comments in the room? Um, folks online? The item that was in the consent agenda, it's now an action item on the EV charging rates. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for motion and a, or discussion and a motion. And I think the important thing, you know, when we, when someone puts out a motion is to make sure that we reference the correct rates, thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour for level two charging and fifty cents per kilowatt hour for level three charging.
Let's give this a go.
Thanks.
I move to amend resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven to read thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour for level two charging and amend and adopt. Thank you. That's what I moved to do.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Tierney.
Sorry.
We had numerous seconds. I guess the nod from Macy. He's very happy. Um, go ahead.
All right, uh, trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yep.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yeah.
And Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes, and thank you trustee Maris for spotting this.
Definitely.
Thank you all. I appreciate you having some understanding there. I appreciate that.
No worries. And yes, good spot. Thanks, Tierney. Um, but that will go to our first discussion item of the, um, evening, the twenty twenty-five budget strategic plan and review assumptions. We're starting budget talks in September. Good job, Rita.
I'm pulling up the presentation right now. Give me one second. Loading very slowly. While this is low up here, go. While we're, uh, what we had kind of anticipated, we've been thinking a lot about the budgetary process that you went through last year and some thoughts about how that went and how the meetings were. And so what we've been trying to do is come up with a process that could work to kind of talk about a couple of different things at once. In a previous meeting, we discussed your strategic plan a little bit. It's time to update that. But again, it's one of those things that we really want the comprehensive plan to really inform that. And so in our previous conversation, what we really talked about is that showing, okay, big enough to see?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can see it fine on our end.
Yeah, it looks good on.
What, oh, sorry, went too far. What, what we tried to do is kind of give you an idea of where we're at right now. So that new comprehensive plan, we know that it's going to be, um, it's scheduled for consideration in late two twenty twenty-four. Um, we need to make a strategic planning transition. So we need to make sure that we've get that kind of twenty-five, twenty-six plan in order. And what we're thinking is, is that once that comp plan is adopted in the multimodal transit plan, we've also actually got almost six other plans working right now between Pro-SAB, uh, SAB, we've got our a couple of other plans that are working now too. So all of these things are kind of coming to an end. And what we really would like to do is make sure that those new strategic goals really reflect what you guys have been doing in that work and those planning efforts. So what we've got here is just a little recommendation that we review and continue with the current strategic goals for 2025, that we align budgetary considerations with these existing goals and that we undertake a full planning process probably in February or March, once the comp plan is adopted. What I've got here is just a walkthrough of the, I don't know why it's not showing everything there. I've got a walkthrough of the strategic goals here, and basically I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of where we're at on these. And this slide isn't showing, right? Uh, I'm sorry. Okay, so the first goal was foster a strong organizational culture where town employees are valued and the town is an employer of choice. There's subgoals under each of these, but in general, the work we did in 2024 was a comprehensive salary survey was conducted, which resulted in pay raises for most employees. Um, it really helps to bring us closer to market standards for our employees, although not everybody is exactly within the range of it, maybe where we ultimately want them. Through 2024, we've really focused on an ongoing evaluation, especially with me coming in. It's been an opportunity for us to really look at positions and organizational efficiency, and that's something that we've been working on at the staff level. We're going to continue to do that work as well. For 2025, what we're recommending is that we continue to work on position alignment. We continue evaluating positions to make sure they're aligned with the town's needs and best practices. And that goes for pay. We still have a couple of employees who probably need to be brought up in their range, who are in really critical roles. And that's something that we need to continue to evaluate. Um, we have been looking at ways that we can give all employees a salary increase in 2025. Currently, Rita has a five percent increase for all employees to help maintain competitive compensation. But that's really subject to budgetary constraints and approval, and that's a very just preliminary would love to do number. It may not end up being what we're able to do. If you have any questions on these slides as we go, please let me know, or I'll just keep going and we can go at the end. The second goal was protect the town's water rights, ensuring the delivery of water to residents and businesses is continuous. Uh, town staff has been working very closely with Mayor Billy, the town water engineers and water attorneys to protect and enhance the town's water rights. In 2025, we're going to continue that work. We're also going to explore opportunities to enhance them where possible. And Public Works has given us a CIP plan for next year that includes right now several million dollars of infrastructure upgrades that we need to make to continue to make sure that we get that continuous delivery of water to residents and businesses. And so the next step for staff is to kind of look at those requests and see what's possible. There may be opportunities to use our reserves a little bit for this to match for other grants we could get to get a little bit bigger bang for our buck. But again, we're still in a kind of a preliminary position there. Third goal was promote orderly, sustainable and resilient development in the town through thoughtful, engaged and equitable planning processes. This slide's a little small, but there's been quite a bit of work in this space, as I mentioned, on these different plans. We had the branding and creative identity plan, the water sewer rate study that's happening right now, the comprehensive plan, the multimodal transportation plan, the parks, recreation, open space and trails plan, the Big Springs Egress Study. Um, there's also the subarea plan, which we just talked about, and some other kind of smaller efforts such as like the drainage plan in Old Town and continuing to look at where we can build a bridge and enhance the safety of our community. Also, this year was the CWPP, the Fire Protection Plan, and some other regional efforts that are going on right now. So we've been in this really heavy planning phase. And so I think what we're saying is that in 2025, the focus should really be bringing these plans to completion and building a strategic plan that really kind of builds on what the vision of them, these plans are saying. So that's kind of what we're saying is that we want to prioritize thoughtful and equitable planning processes that align with this vision. Part of that is, we're going to need to work next year to make sure that our planning processes are expedited for, for affordable housing projects. This is part of our Prop one, two, three requirement, which if you're not familiar with that is the, we're required to build thirteen units of affordable housing, which is targeted to folks making income less than a hundred percent of our area median income. And there's some flexibility in how that happens, but we really need to interrogate our processes and make sure that when we do get a development that includes affordable housing, we can expedite that process. So that's one of the things that we need to do. We're also just kind of advocating for exploring, continue to explore the use of town-owned properties for affordable housing. That work is continuing right now at the legal level. We've completed some initial feasibility studies with our Public Works Department, and that'll be coming back to you soon, actually. And then we need to consider this idea of a code audit that we discussed at our last meeting and how that will work once our comprehensive plan is done. So that's kind of what we're thinking in that space. We do need to also really be thinking about that Prop one, two, three commitment. We need to get that done fairly quickly so we can get it through the permitting process in time. The next goal was to maintain and modernize the town's inf, infrastructure to reduce public safety and health risks and improve the quality of life in our town. Um, a couple of the priorities from the strategic plan were the completion of the safer main streets crossings and sidewalk project and the transportation improvement sidewalk development project. We spoke about these a little bit earlier. Both of the projects are largely completed and we're waiting for C dot concurrence. And then it just is, we're subject to the weather and when concrete can get poured essentially. But I think the safer main streets project, we should be able to get some of the crossing beacons completed at least this year, if not some of the concrete work because it's not very significant. There's also the complete assessment of the roadway system with JVA using LiDAR technology, uh, road base for foundation stabilization and culverts, which will be installed and paid by the town. Uh, and, uh, with some of those fees going to individual homeowners. This summer, you guys kind of mentioned this, but our Public Works team has been really working to clean out and make sure our culverts are working as planned. The LiDAR project in Old Town is completed and JV is working to make sure that our drainage solutions in that specific area are, are what we need. There's also several areas around town where drainage becomes an issue and town staff has been really working to make sure that we understand our infrastructure. There's been a lot of turnover in that department and some of our institutional knowledge was just lost. Some culverts were damaged in snowstorms and things like that. And so this summer, the focus has really been on making sure things are working, replacing the stuff that's really broken. And then we're just going to continue that process of improvement to make sure that we get everything where it needs to be. We would really think it's a good idea this year that we complete the work on our outstanding grant projects. We have several that have been outstanding for years, and that's something that needs to be prioritized by town. We need to complete them. Specifically, the Big Springs Egress Project needs to be completed as soon as we can because we really need to be looking for funding sources to make sure that, that you can get out of that neighborhood in the case of a fire. And also that fire can get into that neighborhood in the case of a fire. And right now, that's not necessarily a given. So we'd really like to prioritize that and continue looking at the bridge. One other thing that I've been talking to Rita about that I would really like to formalize into our budget, but it may be more of a 2025 goal than a 2024 goal, is a complete five-year capital plan based on all of our capital needs as we move forward. We do have a capital, water and wastewater plan, but I'd like to be a little more inclusive of that. One thing that we really need to be thinking about is a complete assessment of all town-owned property. We have quite a bit of deferred maintenance that needs to happen on some of our facilities and, you know, just updating facilities and making sure they're, they're, they're ADA accessible and all the things that a public building should be. And so that work, that's also kind of contingent upon a budget. But I think that as we work through 2025, if we can start developing that five-year capital plan, that's something that would really help us meet this goal. Next goal was to augment and leverage the town's financial resources to support desired levels of service, economic growth and to ensure upkeep of the town's infrastructure. Twenty thirty-three, twenty twenty-four goals were the paid parking program, which we're currently pausing, but is working forward right now. And we're going to be able to bring that back to you very soon for finalizing what that looks like in town. Speed cameras, uh, were, were not part of the 2024 budget, but that was discussed and contemplated in the strategic plan. Fees for EV charging stations, which we discussed this evening, an STR regulatory fee, which was implemented this year, and reinstatement of occupational tax for liquor licensing. For 2025, I think the big thing is the paid parking program, which includes several pieces, and I'm, I'm calling it managed parking here instead of paid parking because it's really a bigger program. We have been looking at some of the older managed parking plans, which just talk about where a visitor to our community can park. And there's, there's quite a bit of work we can do there, and we can partner with the DDA in this work. They have about fifteen thousand dollars for parking improvements downtown, and they're also working on the directional signage program, which is, is also working its way towards conclusion. There are some things in the subarea plan I think might be worth looking at if we could next year. One is changing the direction of flow in the visitor's center parking lot so that not everything dumps into First Street right there. So you'd, you'd basically just reverse it. So you can also exit, exit on the other side of the parking lot, which would make it work a little bit better. So I think that that's something we should do is improve our parking areas, make sure we're striped well and that we're thinking about things like where can we fit motorcycle parking and, and things like that. Um, I think we need to continue monitoring and managing the EV charging station, and if we have an opportunity to put more in, we should do that. Um, especially with the scenic byway and making sure we're taking advantage of the money that's available to us through those programs. And then I think a really big thing is working with the DDA to develop sidewalks and infrastructure based on the recommendations of the multimodal plan and downtown action plan. I think in a lot of ways, this goal is our most important. And what I'd like to tell you is that our budget, and you'll see when Rita starts talking about it here in a minute, we're starting out at a fairly significant deficit. And the reason is because of our sales tax situation. That's the reason. We have done a lot of work in this town over the last several years, and it's great work about thinking about other alternative revenue sources that could support us. But in the current climate in Colorado and with where we are and the impacts we see from our tourism economy, we need to make sure that when people are impacting our community, that they're also paying into our community. So we can pay to mitigate those impacts. We don't want to have a hollowed out community here where people can't live. We want to promote those things and make sure that we have transit and all the community assets and resources we need to stay a town. But at the same time, like if the people who are coming through here can have some, you know, we manage their experience so that they're able to have a good time and, and leave money in our community in a way that's respectful to this community, it would stabilize our budget in a way that will allow the town to remain resilient. I don't think we're at the point to say where we're in a fiscal crisis, but if we do not fix the sales tax situation, that's exactly where we're going to be. And we need to really be thinking carefully and strategically about how we can improve that number without impacting what it means to live in Netherlands. And so I really want to leave you on this slide here, thinking about that for our budget conversations. I think this is something that, um, you guys have been talking about a lot in the comprehensive plan. You've also talked about it in the tourism management plan. And I think that these conversations just need to be focused and brought into the strategic planning efforts for next year. Uh, this is kind of along the same lines, augment and leverage the town's financial resources to support desired levels of services, economic growth and to ensure upkeep of the town's infrastructure. Here, the goal I have, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four goal was working with peak-to-peak housing and human services to identify and apply for grants that will be made available to us, uh, following the acceptance of Prop one, two, three. Those funds have been a little bit difficult to get from the state. However, with that being said, we were successful in our LPC grant, which is a local planning capacity grant from the Department of Local Affairs. And that money is going to go towards us hiring a housing coordinator with Lyons. We also are involved in another LPC grant, which was with Gilpin County and Lyons to explore the feasibility of starting a multi-jurisdictional housing authority. This work is pretty critical to our overall efforts, and we need to continue working to develop these resources so that we can build housing for the people who live here and work here. And so we can continue to have that community going. So I think that what I'm recommending for 2025 is that we continue to work on those goals. And we continue to stabilize and revitalize the local economy through strategic initiatives that align with the town's character. This includes finalizing the tourism management plan and implementing key recommendations from the comp plan, downtown subarea plan, multimodal transit plan. Uh, we should be focused on sustainable and appropriate economic development to support town services, to foster economic growth and maintain vital infrastructure while preserving the town's natural and cultural heritage. We recommend that this be a key focus of the 2025, 2026 strategic plan. Um, I'm going to let Rita take over from here, so you can just next to me when you're ready. Uh, what we're, oh, sorry, we're, uh, just anticipating tonight, what we wanted to bring you is some of our initial revenue assumptions about sales tax and property tax specifically. And then we have one last slide to kind of show you what we're contemplating on schedule.
I'm the town treasurer. Now you can hear me. Anyway, uh, as John had mentioned earlier, uh, sales tax revenues received two month in arrears. So what you're seeing on this slide, the two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar listed in June, uh, was received in August. We have in the meantime, received one more payment, which is for the month of July, and that amount was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So I'm not sure when the ned one fifty was, but it is slightly, again, lower, just slightly by three thousand dollars. So really, um, as I was saying, if this trend continues, I recommend keeping the, uh, sales tax the same for 2025. Right now, overall, we're about five thousand lower than we were the year before. So that's what I have to say about sales tax. Next slide. So John created this great graph here, and what you can see here, obviously, and it's, you know, June, July are the month that our sales tax revenue goes up. Not sure what happened last year in September. I would imagine maybe leaf peeping and we'll see how it is this year. But that was amazing. That was two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So we hope that that happens again this year. Next slide. Property taxes. So as of right now, so this is preliminary. We see a 1.5% or $10,000 increase. And like I said, that's preliminary. We do have a meeting tomorrow that will with Dola that will tell us more about where the property tax is going. So we'll keep you posted on that. And then really final, just so you know, final property tax assessments, we should receive those by the end of November. But right now we are expecting $73,262 in revenue for property taxes. And that's all I have.
I'll take you guys through this last slide. So one of the things we were trying to be cognizant of is to try to keep information coming to you in a way that's digestible and not repeating. We have proposed this budgetary calendar, which I'll walk through you with. And one of the things I'd love to talk to you about is whether or not we have room in here for at least one work session to kind of discuss things. We've kind of built this to be within B O T regular meetings in presentation form. And that's okay, but it might be good just to kind of bring this all together before we get to this draft budget presentation on the fifth. So what we're contemplating right now is tonight, we're doing our strategic plan and initial revenue assumptions. On next meeting, October 1st, we are going to be considering the Boulder County Sheriff contract. And that'll just be a presentation looking at levels of service, and there will be an increase in their contracted amount this year. On October 15th, we have our water and wastewater rate study presentation that'll be presented by Raf Telus, who's the organization doing that study. We also plan to present you with our capital planning efforts and taking a look at expenditures and grants for next year. On November 5th, we are contemplating having a draft budget presentation to you, and that would be kind of after the point that we've talked to all department heads and kind of worked through the numbers and have a workable budget that's relatively solid for you. And then on the 19th of November, having a hearing and then adopting on the third. Now, where we might have some more room here and which what I'm thinking about for this work session is when we talk about the Board of Trustees goals and things that you might want to see, we have some opportunity for there for the in that October 15th meeting. But what I'd like to know is if you might be interested in another in in one or two work sessions, depending on your schedules and what is appropriate, what you're feeling is appropriate, to talk about what might be possible. We are in a position where I think we can be looking at grants next year, but as I said, I think we really need to be finalizing these projects and getting them completed. And then there is a couple of grants that I think we should be going after, and especially if we're able to get some Department of Local Affairs funding for either housing or what's called an energy impact assistance fund grant, which is can be up to a million dollars per project and can be really useful for water and wastewater infrastructure. So if we did that, it might require us to spend some of our reserves down, but we could, we could one-to-one match that with another million dollars potentially. So I think there's some opportunity to have some more conversation around those points or anything that you guys would like to talk about.
I'd absolutely be open to a work session. You're talking about maybe between that October 15th meeting and, you know, like November-ish.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Think, and I don't know, you know, obviously I wasn't on the board in early January, but typically in the past, the Board of Trustees has not held a meeting on election night in November.
We, yeah, right. And this year, actually, thanks for, it's actually November 12th. Thanks for, I was not thinking that. So November 5th is a non-meeting. We had moved it beginning of the year. We shifted that to November 12th. So our two scheduled meetings are the 12th and the 19th. So maybe we should be looking at October 22nd or 29th for the work session.
Is that okay with you?
Twenty ninth to begin, because it'd still be every other week, you know, kind of pace, space, pace it nicely.
If that's okay with you to schedule that meeting, we can get that on the calendar.
Sounds good.
Tanya and Nicole?
Yeah.
Say, say October, maybe 29th.
Yep.
Then.
Yeah.
And then, and just, just so you guys know, I think you just heard me, but November 5th, just, it's actually November 12th. That's when our two meetings are, both in the 19th, November.
So the 12th will cancel then, correct?
No, no, the fifth, John, John, we, at the beginning of the year, we moved the first November meeting back a week.
Oh, okay.
So, so there is no November 5th meeting. There is a November 12th meeting. I'll change that in the forecaster right now, but just so you know.
Okay. So we'll just still have that draft presentation then on that date, and then we can still have the hearing and the adoption as scheduled.
You have one clarifying question, question about something that Rita, you presented on the previous slide. The property tax forecast for 2025. I mean, it, you know, what you're presenting, you know, kind of tracks with normal thing. You mentioned to a meeting with Dola tomorrow. Is that about possible impacts of the 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 deal that was made? Okay, so this is not the deal numbers.
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll find out tomorrow, or you'll find out tomorrow what the impact is from the state. Okay.
Okay, do we have to deal with what we dealt with last year, which brought us in the, where the state brought us in the January to do this? Okay.
We, we talked to the assessor, the Boulder County assessor as well, and they are anticipating that we're not going to see a huge variation this next year. But 2026 is when we're really going to be focusing on that.
So 26, we won't see the typical every other year 20% increase. It'll be like more like a 10% increase in 26. Okay.
So did we talk about work sessions or not?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll add a work session on October 29th, and then we'll still have our draft presentation on the 12th.
Right. So so just that slide, the whole slide looks great, except just change the November 5th to November 12th, and then add a work session on October 29th. And actually, the forecaster does have the dates right, John. We're going to fix that. More questions? Clarifying questions for John or Rita on this?
John, I think in the aim, you were asking if some of those goals aligned with what we were thinking. Is that something you want to come out of this conversation?
I would appreciate some feedback on that if possible. We can also discuss the work session too, but if there was, if you guys have thoughts on that, I'd love to be able to develop them from a budgetary perspective before the next meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think they were, the recommendations were very high level. I'd love to get some specificity in terms of what exactly. You know, for instance, the affordable housing, you know, we came out of the housing study. We're now almost a year into this three-year plan and, you know, we're still needing to, like you, like you had said, get through some permitting for those 13 units. And so I would consider that one of, you know, one of our higher priorities behind the water and infrastructure. So, you know, some other things that I would put on there that I want to see prioritize if there were outputs from the multimodal plan. And, you know, I always get, it's always, when we come to this piece of it, it's so easy to just throw everything at it or just to throw everything that we want. And I'd really caution us against that because there were things that didn't get done that are on that plan, that are on the strategic, the 2024 strategic plan. And so I really ask us to just like, think like, what are the most non-negotiable things that we need to get done going into 2025 and 2026? So, you know, I'd love to see something come off of the CPWW or the the fire study that we just had done. Just to make sure that we're prioritizing some of that public safety. I had a little bit of heartburn between the tourism and the public engagement piece. And I can follow up with you later in like a one-on-one, but it feels like, yes, we've said public engagement in the past, but I haven't seen anything really meaningful come out of it. And so that's a concern of mine that we can explore later. But that's just some high-level, you know, feedback at this point. But welcome other trustees to to say something.
Um, I want to agree with you about the public engagement. That component has not been meaningful. And so I thank you for bringing that up. It just, I just feel like it hasn't been fruitful, so, as other departments have.
And then, you know, and with right, and then like with Peter's role, it seems like it's slanted way more towards the tourism. Or and, and so, you know, I appreciate the tourism plan that's coming out, but then like, I really want to know, are these events actually boosting our businesses? Are they bringing in more sales?
Thank you.
And if they're not, can we just please have a discussion about it? And assess whether or not that's the way, that's a right role to have.
I think, yeah, we need to have a discussion about. I think we should bring that up as a separate discussion. But yeah, I think with the conversation about sales tax being vital for our economy, these events need to be profitable and and fun and bring people into town. And so we need to find out if that's really the case, but probably right now is not the time to delve into it, but I would love a discussion about it. I'm guessing in 2025, it sounds like we're pretty booked, but I'm into it to know for the future. Well, we need to know for the budget, don't we? Yeah. Anyway, thanks for bringing that up.
More clarifying questions or comments for John or Rita? If none right now, we'll go ahead and move to public comment. Public comment on the 2025 budget strategic plan and revenue assumptions. The room, any comments? If not, go online, folks. We got any comments from the folks online? Eric? Oh, yeah, Eric, your hand's up. Go ahead, Eric.
Hi, folks. Eric Coombs is Mile. I live in town. It all looks like you're on the right track. I agree with trustee Sterling or Mayor Pro Tem Sterling that it does seem very high level without a lot of specifics. So I would like to see maybe more specific goals that seem achievable within a year's timeframe, which of course is always the challenge here. But with all the discussion around sales tax being an issue and tourism management and all those things, I just wanted to throw out there that I really think centering residents' experience will naturally lead to a better visitor experience. And that that's something that when when we're developing these plans and these ideas for what we might improve, we should not lose sight of. So if I can get to town on multimodal pathways that aren't using my car and do my shopping in a more meaningful way, sales tax will go up as well, just as much as any tourist coming through town might visit one of those same businesses. So if I don't have to get in my car and drive down to Boulder to shop, right? Things that we're going to spend our money, maybe more in town in Netherlands. So I'm really asking you guys to focus on resident experience as the foundation so that visitor experience can be improved as a natural result of that, rather than trying to turn it the other way around and put the cart before the horse. That's just my, my hope for the the plan moving forward. Thanks.
Well, you would have been proud in the tourism management plan review is it was 100. At least there were those of us who were focusing on, can we just focus on the locals? Can we just focus on the locals? Can we please just focus on the locals? So.
Well, that that brings me up to the question on the one of the budget slides. It had like the parks, trails system was like hiatus. Why is that, Jonathan?
You, you mean the PROS plan?
No, the slides that we saw here with the budget and it had the goals and it had like Big Springs egress was progressing and then it was like trails management on hold or something. I'm not using the right word. I don't remember it. I didn't memorize it.
PROSAB has a planning effort that's happening right now, but it needs the comp plan to be completed.
Because why, it was like, it was like, I'll look for it too, but I saw that and I'm, well, why is that on hold?
The comp plan needs to be.
Who wants to build trails, who's going to give us X amount of dollars every year for free in trail building?
The comp plan needs to be completed for them to finish what they're doing.
Are you talking about the PROS plan? Yeah.
It was like listed stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's really, it's just on hold now, you know, and Nikki had mentioned it in her report too. Until the comp plan's over and then they'll jump right back on it.
Pause, we'll resume post comprehensive.
They're still doing their work. For instance, the Riverwalk Trail is being worked on today or, you know, right now. There's also been some ongoing conversations about the other big trail project that has been contemplated is the Wrinkling Trail. But that has a very complicated legal status right now. So we're trying to work through that in a, in a way that, in a good way. So that's also being worked on right now. There's a lot of other trails and connections that the PROSAB board has been working on. And trustee Miller, I don't know if you want to add anything to that because you're a rep there, but.
Yeah, I am. I mean, I know that with the PROS plan, we deliberately decided to put that on hold until the comp plan was complete or at least more complete, so we could make sure that everything we were doing aligned with the comp plan.
There's a lot of obvious things like the Big Springs Point Park area. Yeah. A disaster. And then that connects to Big Springs Drive. That is a disaster. And it doesn't, you don't need a comprehensive plan to know that that needs to get dealt with as far as tree mitigation, just general walkability. It's, it's an amazing access to our waterfront. I mean, I'm not trying to like, eh, I'm, but I'm like, just to bring it to what Eric was saying, like, if there was more trails into town from all directions, it would make people more excited, like locals. So it just, that's why I hate all these plans because everyone's like, well, let's just wait till the plan's done and then we'll worry about it. And it's like, okay. Well, there'll be another plan probably after the comprehensive plan. Someone's going to bring up another plan and we're going to put it off into the year.
I do want to clarify that that's not even, that's not what I said. What I said is that we've spent literally probably a million dollars on these plans at this point. And if we start working on spending other money without really thinking about where we're at on these plans, it's just going to result in the situation where we're going to be spinning our wheels or potentially doing work that has to be redone. And so what I'm proposing is that, yes, I did present high-level information to you today because what we need to do is continue to make sure that we're achieving these goals. I 100% agree with that. And we need to, I can present more very clearly defined goals for you, but our, our boards and commissions, you know, a good example is, is Moose Meadows. We had fire mitigation happening there last weekend through volunteers, and that's a PROSAB effort that they coordinated and and got, I think, over a dozen volunteers to help with. And so it's just, there's just a lot of pieces right now that really need, what we really need to do in this town. And it kind of comes to like the relationship between this board and other boards, which I mentioned before too. There's, there's, there's organizations like the DDA, which are a separate quasi-governmental entity essentially. But the work they're doing is largely on public infrastructure, and I think that their work really needs to be aligned with the Board of Trustees so that you are kind of in this role where you're saying, look, these are the priorities of the town. What that allows me to do as the town administrator, say to the town staff, these are our priorities and goals. These are how we measure those goals and track those goals, and these are how we, we execute projects effectively. Especially in this budgetary climate we're coming to, we really have to be targeted in what we're doing. And we're not going to be able to just say, you know, we, we want to upgrade the wastewater plant next Tuesday. We're going to have to really think about the sustainability of this community. And that's why I said that when we, when we think about sales tax, we need Netherlands to say what it is. That's why, that's what that slide said. We need it to be a unique place where people live and where there's community assets like stores and and the different resources people need to live up here and stay up here. But we also need to be aware of the fact that tourism drastically impacts this community. And right now that that isn't doing anything to help residents necessarily. It's not providing the same level of support that its impact implies. And so what I would like to do is just focus on how we build that, that kind of balanced approach to what we're thinking about and really thinking about. You know, if we're going to be impacted by tourism, we don't need to bring more of it, but we do need it to pay its own way when it's here. And that's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, no, and and well said. And I, and I think because I was one of the more critical folks of that tourism management plan that if we can align that, if, you know, because my guess is the comprehensive plan is also going to come out with very big strokes on ecotourism and outdoor recreation. We align that with a connected bike trail system that we said we've wanted for years and years and years. And that becomes the focus, focus on the locals and things that they want, as you know, Eric had said. And we start to align these things, right? Instead of like trustee Corvallon said, like creating another plan potentially from a plan. I'm, I'm critical of the tourism management plan because I was just, there was a lot more thrown in there and we just. And we just, we've had lots of conversations for it and it was just, it was I was shocked that it wasn't more of the focus on the locals like we had been talking about. So when that comes before us again, I would, I just really hope that that's it's dialed down and it has that focus. Um, and for the NDDA, um, I would be one to say, I really hope their focus is infrastructure. If I don't see a single line item for beautification, I'd be okay with that. It's just, I just, I I've got a thumbs up from Eric. I'm just, I'm just tired. I'm just tired of hearing from our residents that we need infrastructure. And so I think you're right, John, that we and the NDDA need to get a little bit better at that. We need to get way better at.
Because I think they think infrastructure is towns.
And right, and it's and it's 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 both, it's both, but I would agree, Tanya, like we.
Literally Nikki has us paying for people to pick up trash in our budget as extra people. And when I would think that should be part of town budget. So it is overlapping big time and um you all need, like we, you all, we need to come to the NDA with what we need to pay for. Because they can't read any lines. So you want us to pay for some infrastructure, then you need to bring that to the NDA specifically as a line item. Because otherwise, we're going to focus on fun stuff like beautification.
Well, we intend to. I mean, we did, we did meet with, we did meet with Andrew directly and we talked about some of the things that do make sense, infrastructure development right in the downtown district. I mean, things that need to happen in the area that, you know, is is the district, is the special district of DDA. Um, so
Well, yeah.
That is where it makes sense.
Yeah, but you know, it's just for like the NDA to pay for infrastructure when literally.
Well, but that is infrastructure. No, but that is infrastructure. I mean, I mean, water.
Y'all don't want to see hours anymore. Should we just leave those pots empty?
If it means, if it means we're not going to get. But that's just me.
I do want to.
No, I I agree. It's it's not as important.
We probably have about nine months of design work ahead of us to really do what needs to happen downtown. I do want to caution everybody that there is there's still a lot of broccoli to be eaten here in this situation. We've got to get to the point where we can actually execute and we are not there. So there is, that should be a part of this conversation is that we just need to be realistic about how difficult First Street specifically is going to be to fix. You know, we've got 22 feet deep pipes in there. We've got old infrastructure. We've got places where ADA accessibility is going to be a challenge and that is something that's going to be a component of this project. So I think just remember that as we move through these goals, we are not anywhere close to shovel ready. One of the things we could do though is talk about with the DDA about some maybe interim projects. I had a good conversation with Chaney Bostic today, who's the subarea plan kind of uh person essentially about could we do some kind of like mining boardwalk thing where we could improve some of our sidewalks incrementally along First Street specifically. And and I think there's money in the DDA to improve the sidewalks on Second Street. And that is something that we could probably achieve, but I just want to make sure we understand a lot of these infrastructure goals are, they should be the priority, but there's going to be design process that we really need to get done next year.
Fabulous. Let's prioritize that and make sure it gets done.
Agreed.
All right, so no followers. I'll let them know.
Thank you.
I I think it's also just an important note, like, you know, Tanya's comment about one more plan and one more plan, you know, like a lot of these plans are going in tandem, you know, even though they kind of depend on each other. And I think that's something that, you know, at least the original comment about the ProSAB, you know, waiting on PROS is like, it's not like we're not doing anything. We're doing all the stuff that we can do that we know is obvious without waiting for the comprehensive plan. And I think that's just something that that we all need to realize with all these plans that are happening right now is they're they're all going at the same time. So we're we're kind of nearing, hopefully, an end point where we'll have a a complete set with several different plans which we can use to drive our show.
I do want to say that every plan is always said trail connectivity, trail to town. That's never been not in a plan. So it's never been moved forward. Why is that hiatus? You know what I mean?
Well, it's just because right, it's just because we, so we've already, you know, we've already done all of that work, you know, for the PROS plan. It's like, okay, let's not do any more until we know the stuff that we might not know. So I think that's what I'm saying. It's like we've, we've done all the obvious things for the PROS plan and then we're just waiting to see what the comprehensive plan brings before we finalize it. And we don't even have to wait for the final comprehensive plan. We can just get through the draft stage and then we'll know.
And that's really good feedback from the board too. That's something that our advisory board specifically need to hear is what their focus needs to be. And I think that's something that in 2025 we can improve is the communication to the boards from the Board of Trustees to the Advisory Board specifically about what they should be engaging in. Like the microgrid that trustee Miller also mentioned, those are things that I think should be communicated as as part of their work plan for those years.
And um coming back to the microgrid and I was going to make this comment earlier, but I'll make it now. One of the reasons why I would say that does not necessarily live just in SAB is because I see that as a resiliency tactic um for our electrical grid. And that's a, that's a, that's a town thing. That's us thing that we would want to prioritize and ask for SAB's um commitment to support. Which, if possible, you know, John, if that's something, I don't know if we'll be ready for it in 2025 or if that needs to be a 2026 thing, but the electrical outages just happen way more and we have a light industrial zone that enables microgrids. So.
This feedback has been really good for staff and I really appreciate it. And I think also I want to hear crazy ideas too, if you have them, because we need to put together a good some thinking on bringing together our our goals. And so anything feedback wise that is here that we should be thinking about, can we find the budget for in 2025 would be helpful, whether it's crazy or not. We just, this is the time to say it.
Stage right.
Crazy ideas. What are you talking about? I'll send you a list.
No, thank, thanks for the invite and it's probably better that we, that is something we can do. We just have to.
John, I I you were looking for ideas for balancing the budget or what was the crazy ideas?
Just things, you, everybody has ideas about what makes town the best. And I think that's what we're looking for right now is where we should be focusing our efforts in 2025. And right now, what we're at, we are at that high level point where Rita and I need to be able to interrogate what goals are, something that we can achieve in 2025 and what might be on a little bit longer horizon. So I was thinking, you know, I've heard many things, you know, the the multimodal plan will have prioritized infrastructure so we can build out a good plan for that. But if there's other things like, you know, maybe we're talking about smaller grants, like bike infrastructure in towns, there's more safe places to keep bikes or other other things that would just make, maybe you mentioned trash cans. I think trash cans is a big one.
School, safer acts to school. The high school. I know it's not in town, but there's been no traction on that.
And that's very county. Yeah, I mean, you're right. You're right. But the county is really.
There has been nothing.
An acre on the effort. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know that some, that's something in particular that Nikki has been fighting for for a long time. And because of the multi-jurisdictional nature of that between BVSD, Town Netherlands, Boulder County and uh Caribou Ranch, um, there's there's just all, I, you know, it's a lot of parties to coordinate and I I think that.
Yeah, but you know what? If this was Boulder City or Boulder, anywhere else in Boulder, no way they'd let their kids wander on the like that in the snow.
That, that is for sure.
You know, yes, but that's just how it's going to be.
Yeah. And going to that request, this is something that post comprehensive plan. So I I want to propose a couple of things that may take time and some budget, not so, it wouldn't be so much a budget initiative, but that safer connected um to schools trails would be potentially part of an IGA with Boulder County. We paused our, those conversations once our comp plan was done so that we could go back into negotiations with Boulder County. That could be something from a strategic standpoint that we prioritize again um and that we put into our our planning. The other thing I would throw out there in terms of crazy ideas that we etch out in terms of time would be potentially investigating home rule. I would love to see what that might entail as being part of our strategic planning process.
Other crazy ideas would be go
Go ahead.
Go back to some of the things we've tried to do in the past and just kind of it's been blocked or falling apart, like, you know, just a decent sidewalk on First Street so the tourists aren't walking down the middle of First Street. I mean, we tried to do that five years ago. There's safer main streets grant we're moving forward with and the DDA killed it. Let's go back to that and and try and do a project in in our downtown area that makes it more appealing for tourists to stop, walk around, spend money. And which works for Eric to get downtown and do his shopping on without, you know, driving his car.
Um, how did the DDA kill it? I thought we just didn't get the grant.
Yeah, the.
They, it went to the DDA with the DDA was going to provide the matching funds and the DDA said, basically said, no, we don't want to pursue any projects downtown because something else is going to happen soon. And that was five years ago and nothing's happened. So we've been without sidewalks for five years.
Well, I don't want to argue with you, but I think that Miranda submitted it and.
No, she didn't. It was blocked by the DDA. We can go back and find the records. It's all in the.
I think there's two different instances. Chris, there may have been one during your time. There was another one that we had just submitted maybe like a year ago.
That's why I said five years ago. Yeah. I'm talking about five years ago.
But it was for the same thing. It was for putting sidewalks in the downtown and we got denied.
We can still try again?
Sure, that would be a part of the infrastructure. Absolutely. And that the NDDA could participate and offer up for.
Yeah, I do. I do want to reiterate one thing that Nicole said, which is, you know, and this is really coming out of the mouths of the commissioners last fall, that once, you know, that we need to go back and get our comp plan done and we're working on that and it's almost done. Because there could be, there will, there will be, there are several things that are important to us. And the old comp plan was pretty focused on, you know, one thing, annexation and i- if we even do a uh IGA with the county, it has to be something that we really benefit from in as many ways as we can. So definitely that, you know, the one, just one of those items being the high school route, but there's, I feel there's. Any more clarifying comments? I do not. Yes, we did. Yeah, we did go to public commentary, did we? I'm a little dizzy right now. Yep. Okay, so any more comments or discussion or ideas? And if you have more ideas that come to your head, this is, you know, this is the perfect time. Just send them to John and Rita. Thanks, everyone, for getting the budget talks started. Actually, do you need any more guidance nods from us on anything specific?
No, you will see more specific. I just wanted to, we needed a starting point for the conversation, so we will narrow this down and bring back what you guys are asking for. So thank you for the feedback and for letting me uh have this discussion with you so I know where we need to be headed.
And congratulations and thank you for starting this in September.
Yeah, thank you, John. Really appreciate it.
And Rita, appreciate it. Um, with that, we will move on to our second discussion item of the evening, the um term limits discussion. Um and I think that will be trustees Corvallin, trustee Corvallin and Mayor Pro Tem Sterling.
Yeah, Tanya, did you want to take this one?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Nicole. Um, well, this was brought to my attention during one of our meetings in early August when we were going over BOT uh policy and there was just like a simple statement about term policies, uh term limits. And that, I mean, it it's in the aim, but um after a certain amount of time or a certain amount of terms, um any elected official needs is term limited and and they need to wait four years before they can join. So then I was like, oh, well, obviously Larson, trustee Larson, who was Mayor Larson and I, he was my mayor, our mayor, um waited two years between and I was alarmed because like we are violating the Colorado statute here. To me, it seemed pretty clear. I was like trustee Larson should probably resign so that we don't get in trouble. And then um there was a bit of discussion. It was a public meeting and um we were like reference to the the Thornton case and that there is ambiguity regarding that statute because if you have a different role in town government, then term limits do not apply. Um, and of course, the mayor is different than being a trustee, yet of course, the mayor acts as a trustee um throughout all the meetings and votes the same way and discusses and gets CC'd on the emails. But of course, the mayor also has other jobs that the trustees don't do. So mayor has basically two jobs. Um, one is a trustee, one is a mayor and is a part of our Board of Trustees. So to me, it was pretty clear, but to the rest of the board and the council we have been receiving is saying that they are very distinct. So and that thereby term, term limits do not apply and that a person could thereby go from mayor to trustee, to mayor to trustee until they decide not to do it anymore, which most people would not have that kind of inclination, but there are people that do. And so it was alarming to me. And so I brought this up as an agenda item because of the ambiguity and the mixed messages that I've been receiving. Because to me, it seemed clear that we were in violation and that trustee Larson should probably not be allowed to have run in the first place. But um then again, we were counseled that it's not even up to the town to determine those things. And so um here we are. And I want to just clarify that I think we need to clarify this for future um so that we don't end up in a situation where we have the ambiguity if we want somebody to be going from mayor to trustee is because we want that. And so I have brought the aim before us so that we can discuss it. And um what do we want? And it's, I don't think it's even up to us as the trustees because I have my opinion, other people have theirs, but it's very ambiguous as to what should we allow in our town? Because since it is very entwined, the mayor and trustee position, is it something we want to allow to just flip flop? And many people would say, yeah. So I'm like, let's bring this to a vote. And so thus you see the aim before you and we can have discussion around that. And I'm hoping there's some public discourse about it as well. Because apparently that we talked about this a few years ago, a few years ago. And unfortunately, we didn't conclude anything. And here we are two years later with an actual issue in front of us. So um for future trustees, I think this is important that we clarify. And the statute is in the aim, or at least a partial of it. The more important issue of term limits. So this is about term limits. It's not about um anything else. What, you know, is there an advantage to somebody not term limiting it out and staying until they decide not to be a member? Of course, this is an elected role, so it's not like it's pointed, but then there's the whole appointed issue. Could you appoint somebody who's been term limited? So I I think this is ideally going to go to an election, a special election, which will cost us money unfortunately, but we need to clarify those two issues. One, the mayor trustee, do we want that to go infinity? Do we, do we think that it's even okay? Like it maybe it's not even okay right now. Um, and also with the appointed, can we appoint somebody who's been term limited out? Since the statute says elected. So I'll let everybody else speak now. Thank you.
I'll ask Nicole. Um, thanks, Tanya. Appreciate it. Um, thanks, trustee Corvallin. Mayor Pro Tem Sterling, would you um add, add if you, if you need, want to add anything to that aim?
Um, the only thing I would add is I think it'll be a very fruitful discussion if um, trustees could offer kind of their pros and cons to what trustee Corvallon was talking about. You know, what are the pros to having uh, the term limits? What are the cons to having the term limits? Um, I would, I would really appreciate a discussion around that um, so that then the public can weigh in.
Okay, so per Nicole's request and really, you know, on the top of clarifying questions, this would be a good time for us to talk about our pros and cons um, as we see it for these questions. And then, you know, before public comment, is that what you're asking, Nicole?
Yeah, because I'd love folks to be able to, to comment um, from the public on, on even what we're talking about in the pros and cons.
Okay, great. So clarifying questions and as well as your, our perspectives on pros and cons for term limits. Um, I mean, term limits being set, you know, one way or another, based on role in, in the BOT or mayor.
So my understanding is that generally term limits exist because we want to encourage public participation. We want new voices in government. We want to decrease the risk of people becoming career politicians and sticking around forever and this being their job. We want to reduce the risk of possible complacency or potential corruption. I think those are the really big values underlying the idea behind term limits. You know, some of that applies in a small local government and some of it is less relevant, I think, in a small local government like this. Um, I think there's significant value in having new voices and creating a space for new voices um, and a space for new ideas. But the risk of people becoming career politicians on the board of trustees is probably pretty minimal. Um, same with the risk of special interest groups, you know, lobbying and corrupting our, our elected officials here. Um, so you know, I think that those are kind of the, the purposes underlying term limits, but there are also downsides. I think first we potentially lose experience and expertise on a board when people kind of develop that expertise over time or experience over time. They're bringing value to the board too. Um, we also have a very limited pool of people who might be interested in becoming an elected official in this town. We're just a small town. So we have to think carefully about how we restrict potential candidates. And that's another point to bring up too. We are restricting the, the candidates that are able to run and um, I think we're taking a potential option away from voters as well when we do that. Such is something else to keep in mind. So I think those are really kind of the general policy arguments, both for and against term limits. Frankly, I don't know if I feel strongly either way in this setting, especially when we're talking about just a four-year break between terms. Like that's what the, the statute is, right? You have to, okay, if you term out, then you have to take a four-year break and then you can come back. Um, I, I think I lean kind of in favor of of kind of creating that space for new voices when we're talking about a, a four-year break before coming back. That seems relatively reasonable to me. But I do think that both the policy arguments on both sides make um, are, are compelling in this specific setting.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Tierney.
Other perspectives? That's for folks in the room and, and Tanya and Nicole's war.
Trustee Ty, any thoughts?
I'm trying to
He hates when you do that.
I'm
If you could not
Trying to organize. I, I, I have a lot to say. Um, I have a lot rattling around my head about this because yet again, I will defer to my inexperience in, in this situation, but now I'm here. So now I have to experience it. I want to experience it. Um, I mean, I think there's, like Tierney said, like career politicians, I don't want that happening, you know? That's a, I feel like that's a big problem in our top government situation. Um, at the same time, I, I can't say from experience, like the job of the mayor and the job of a trustee is the same. My gut reaction is that it's not. Um, there's a lot more to being a mayor. I don't really feel like it's the same thing. Yes, they have a vote on the board of trustees, but it's a, it's, it, my gut feeling is it's a very different job. Um, it's not it, you know, just talking to Billy, just as a friend, seems like he's a lot more busy than I am as a trustee. I mean, to me, the voters spoke. They voted Larson in. Because they like
What are you interested in seeing in the future? Like in terms of the, the term limits?
I mean, I don't think it should be infinite by any means. Um, I think, I think, you know, you know, as far as I see it, they voted him in if, if we want to hold another vote to potentially adjust that or make it a lot clearer. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I'd say go for it.
But the way we have it now, the way that we're accepting it is that it's infinite then. Well, infinite as long as you get elected. And you change your role from mayor to trustee. So it, that is, is kind of what we're discussing. Like is that how we would like the town to be run? With that kind of flexibility? Or are we looking for where the term limits apply? Doesn't matter if you're mayor or trustee. You have to wait four years after your terms. Now, I mean, obviously I, I am never partial to the seven of us making these decisions. So that's why I would bring this to a vote because I know how I feel. But that may not be how the majority of our constituents feel.
And I think just to clarify, Tanya, I think that's, we're supposed to be talking about pros and cons at this point during the kind of clarifying questions, pros and cons and then
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think you said him quite well, Tierney. Uh, of course, there's no career politician happening in that because it's basically volunteer. So get a career out of it, but uh, I mean, there has been people on subboards that have figured out a way to make it in their value. Um, but I I don't necessarily think that's what's going on with most trustees or people on the boards, but I am for diversity.
Thank you. And you, you want, you have more pros and cons, Tony? You want to specify now?
No, I think, I think that Tierney spelled them out pretty well.
Yeah, and we can keep it. And this is still open. Some people can keep talking about it too. Go ahead, Luke.
Yeah, I see Luke trying to talk.
I'm trying to decide if I'm going to say anything, but um, I think, I think it's important to note that, you know, we're talking about elected positions. So the people, the residents of the town, the voters are always going to have a say about who gets elected and who doesn't. And I think that's something that's super important. We shouldn't forget. And we also want to be super clear in our co- in our code, in our, you know, statutes that there, there's no ambiguity of this situation where it's not particularly clear if the office of mayor is the same as a tr- like that. That's something we really don't want. I don't want to see that continue.
You don't want to see that ambiguity?
Yeah. I mean, we really like, I mean, having this be very clear, whether or not we limit those terms is a separate issue from let's make sure it's really clear what the term limits are. Um, and you know, and I don't think there are any pros or cons around that clarification, right? Like it's just, there's no, there's no advantage to not being clear. So I think with that's something that very much we need to be, make sure we do. Um, and then as far as do we limit the terms? I think that's more of a discussion item for me.
Okay, thanks. More folks, more um, trustees and with, with pros and cons? Nicole, Chris? Good. Nicole, do you have any?
Not that that's already been said. I would love to hear public comments now if you're willing to go there, Mayor Billy.
I figure I'll give a couple of pros and cons first. Um, just they'll drum up some public comment. Um, or not. Um, so I, I think there, there's definitely, um, you know, I, I think, you know, and when Tanya says, you know, a person doing this infinitely, that's a con, you know, for sure. Um, and I think and even if you read article eighteen, section eleven, like it starts out with like the, the goal of this is to get more people um, make this option available for folks. And so more opportunity for more folks to step up is, is, you know, is the, is one of the potential pros of term limits and just making sure that there's a, you know, there's seats coming up. Um, an issue I just will bring up is that we have struggled with interest in running for receipts where we barely have enough people running to fill seats. Uh, the BOT has done better than some boards and other boards. We may get just the applicants that equal the number of seats available, or we may have less applicants than we have seats available. And with the BOT, it's not always been, I think we've done better in elections than we have in appointments for, for like number of people stepping up, but it's still, it's still been pretty light. So that's just a factor. It's not a pro or a con, but I think we can all say that we've, we've noticed that we don't have a lot of people throwing in their hats. I do think, you know, with regards to, you know, just touch on it, you know, the, the role of the mayor is kind of the conduit for information, for the press and different things. There is something that makes sense to have one person kind of for sake of effectiveness of government, one person that kind of sets the agenda is kind of the point person, if you will. But I love the fact that there's seven votes and the mayor's vote is just an equal vote. So it's a great check and balance and it's I think an advantage of how we've set up our government versus a strong mayor and I, and I quite like that. Um, and the mayor does end up having, you know, more responsibilities, whether one wants to argue it's a different office or the same. There's more things, but there's advantage of one person just being the conduit for effective government, like I said. And then the other thing that Tierney did bring up uh, is that experience, you know, we are a small town. We only have so many people and um, um, just having those folks cycle back in, you know, whether it's waiting four years or whatever is decided. Having the option for folks with experience to be available to come back into the fold, maybe at a time that works for them again in life, um, is good. You know, I mean, I know this spring, it was one thing a person said to me, a person who would run for mayor against, against Chris in the past was like, great, Chris is running. I'm psyched. You guys need the experience. That's exactly what he said to him. And this was a fellow who ran against you for mayor. Um, and so it's, there's as for pros and cons for term, term limits, I think there are definite pros to letting folks serve for a while and then be done, whether it's for good or, or come back later. And then um, the cons is just uh, whether the amount of time is enough time or, or, or too much time, you know, the, the con is just like, does that magic number really add up in all the scenarios? So how do we best define term limits? That kind of covers all the scenarios. That'd be my one thought. And that, you know, I am with Tanya when we get discussion, I very much want to go, this to go to the public and not have the seven design on it. So those are my comments. Um, with that, we could go, we would go, we will go to a public comment. Any public comment on this right now? Tom in the room? If not, we'll go to folks online. Kathleen, you have, your hand is up and Eric, your hand is up. Kathleen, your hand's been up for a bit. So go ahead. You have three minutes.
I'd like to have Eric go first. Can you hear me?
I, I'd like you to go first. Your hand was up.
Okay. Well, we're talking as if term limits isn't a constitutional amendment voted on right now and every other person before Chris Larson has abided by term limits. And I would say that even Chris Larson was forced to abide by term limits when he didn't run two years ago. He changed his mind because um, because the Thornton case hadn't passed. So we all understood what the term limits were. They're very clear. Um, Kevin Mueller is a perfect example. Two, two terms on the board as a trustee. People wanted him to come back. He said, I'm termed out. I'm sorry. I need to take a four-year break. And uh, so Chris Larson knew ahead of time before he ran that he needed to take a four-year break. He did three terms as the mayor and on top of that, he had already done a half term as a trustee. So he had eight years in. Um, and then he ran and it's just amazing to me when I, we hear about uh, uh, people saying the goal was to get more people involved. Well, the last six BOT elections and the term limits are only on the BOT because you're the only elected office. Um, the last previous six elections, five of them, there were more people that ran than made out on the board. And in this case, Jesse Severs was not termed out. He did run again and he came in fourth and Chris Larson, if we'd have been following the state statute that we're supposed to be, because this is a constitutional amendment, uh, Chris wouldn't have been allowed to run. Macy should have never accepted his forms. And then the Thornton case happens and we act like the Thornton case is, is really the Netherlands case. And that's not the case. And Chris Larson also, when we talk about career politicians, he tried to run for Joan Goose's seat and he, the Democratic Party told him he had, he had to step aside because he wasn't going to be picked. So he is interested in a career politician position beyond the Netherlands Board of Trustees. So I, it sounds to me like from what, I'm sorry, I don't remember the new trustee's name, but she said, you know, that um, we need diversity and we need people. Um, we need to decide, well, the voters already decided. And it, there was no questions here until this Thornton case came up. And if the Thornton case really controls every other community, then that means the constitutional term limits have been uh, superseded by, by a, 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 one ruling in one court for a home rule town that doesn't apply in Netherlands. There is no current two offices. If Chris Lars, I'll finish. And if Chris Larson stays on the board, he's in violation and people will be taking legal action. And if the board of trustees doesn't think that we're going to reinterpret the constitution now just because of this Thornton case, well, then their oath of office are also being violated by themselves. I don't know what else to say, but uh, we don't want a career politician. It doesn't sound like anybody wants a career politician and that's why you have term limits. And it's constitutional. This, this isn't something that one court case supersedes the constitution.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had to take you off.
Thank, thank you, Tony, or thank you, Kathleen. Um, Eric?
Eric Coombs is mild. I live in town. Um, well, first I, I'll, I'll say that I think that term limits are foundational to a functioning democracy. And that I think we should all be generally in favor of there being term limits, uh, because that is, I think, part of how democracy has any hope of actually working for people. Uh, but I secondly, I'll say that I don't find that this conversation, uh, and this debating the vagaries of Colorado constitutional law and how it applies to Netherlands municipal code is a great use of the board of trustees' time. I personally think that the, the kind of acrimony and uh, division that this produces is uh, fundamentally damaging to the town and to the priorities of this board. And so if we are going to engage in this conversation, which I'm sad that we are doing, but if we are engaging, engaging in this conversation, my hope would be that we do address uh, because sec- you know, uh, article eighteen, section eleven essentially in it, in it, in itself states its own inadequacy uh, by, by saying like, please change me. Right? Like a By, by saying like, please change me, right? Like, change me and apply. And apply better rules that suit your community, that suit your town, that makes sense for your residents and your people. That's how I read the, the spirit of this particular part of the Colorado Constitution. It also doesn't make sense. I mean, for purposes of this section eleven terms are considered consecutive unless they're at least four years apart. Makes no sense. That means I can have a two year term and then two years off and two year term and then two years off and two year term and two years off. And those are three consecutive terms. That's ridiculous. Like, that's not logical and nobody would understand that in, in, in any common sense way. So it's. Fundamentally, I think that we should decide, I think you guys are on the right track. Like, what does the town of Netherlands actually need? And this might be an opportunity to do something I think actually might be of value, which would be to address what trustee Maris. Described here as the point of all of this, which is to broaden opportunities for public service. Right? And if we are going to broaden opportunities for public service, I think we need to remove barriers for engaging in public service. If we want to have a more civic minded community, we need to reduce the barriers. And I think the four year term is one such barrier. I think it's too long. It's too long to expect a volunteer member of our community to serve. I don't, I think that the idea of having continuity on the board is over indexed as a value. I think that it may be useful, but I'm not sure that it's as useful as allowing more people to participate. And having a more civic minded town overall by getting more people to run. I think more people would run. If they were running for a two year term than a four year term. I think everyone should be up for election every two years. We do it in the House of Representatives. We can do it on the Town of Netherlands Board of Trustees. And I think that there should be two years off after three terms. And I think that this makes sense for our community. It makes sense for our town. It would flatten all of this out. Stop making it so complicated. Reduce barriers for entry. And if anything came out of this conversation, which I maintain is fundamentally not a great conversation for our town to be having. Because I don't think it advances any of our strategic priorities. But if we were to get something out of this. I hope that it would be more civic engagement and public participation in this process. And I think that you guys should seriously consider removing the four year term entirely, making all terms two years, three terms, two years off. End of story, done and dusted. Everyone can understand it from the outside, from the inside, from any side. And make, basically make something that makes sense for, for Netherlands. That's what I'm hoping for.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate that. Are there more public comments? Lindsay, see your hands up?
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, you're a little muffled, but yeah.
Okay, um, I just want to say that I.
Actually, I can't, I can't hear her. Lindsay, it sounds like you're underwater.
You're pretty muffled.
Is this better?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to, you post to my computer here. I have it in a docking station. Anyways, if you can hear me, I just wanted to say that I agree with Eric in trying to simplify it and make it as straightforward as possible. Um, I think most of you read my email bit earlier where it's confusing as to how you calculate. What an equivalent term is between mayor and trustee when you're determining term limits. Since you can have three terms as mayor, but only two terms as trustee and one is four and one is two years and then like trying to calculate that. If somebody was, you know, one term mayor and one term trustee, are they done or could they run for another thing? It was very confusing when they're not equivalent. But if you made everything two years, like what Eric is saying, that actually makes it very simple. And pretty straightforward. And then you can set term limits. Potentially for the entirety of the board instead of by office. And I think that was what was brought up in 2022 was that you set an eight year term limit regardless of what position is held. That eight years was the max before you need to take a break. And so that means. Partial to, partial terms, whatever office you were holding, it didn't matter unless you added up to eight years. So yeah, just trying to find ways to make it simple because, you know, for me and the aim reading about the. Trying to focus on the term in office, whether the offices are the same, I think that's kind of a red herring for the actual argument we need to have. That's all.
Thanks, Lindsay. Any other public comments? If not, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
Well, I just wanted to mention what Lindsay was saying about the in office. So, um, what she's suggesting, eight years max regardless of what position you're in. Because the reason why I brought up the in office aspect was because if you. Consider the mayor and the trustee to be different offices, then the term limits never apply and there's never a break. So, I mean, if, if. If you, you don't like the in office and then you're saying eight years sounds good, that means regardless of the office. Because you kind of have to have some sort of terminology to describe that. What, eight years in what? In any position, any elected or appointed position? So. Sounds like we need to, if we do bring this to an election, then we need to say in any elected or appointed position, eight years maximum. Two terms. I mean, there has to be some language to determine that. Otherwise. That's the whole point. Because if we're saying that mayor and trustee are different enough that term limits don't apply. Then it doesn't matter eight years. I mean, what's, I mean, I don't know why there's a dispute on that problem that I'm having in office. I, I need to know what people want. We want to let people just stay in office in perpetuity as long as they get elected. As long as it's mayor or trustee, or do we want to just max it out at eight years? So these are issues we have to like solidify. And, you know, I know Eric doesn't think this is a vital conversation, but at the same time, he thought term limits were important to democracy. And, and yet if we don't address this, we're denying that term limits exist because we're allowing people to just exist in perpetuity. So. Just curious what everybody else thinks. Like, how would we want to phrase this conversation? Are we, do we want to have it just max it out at a certain years? If we're gonna, because we can, in an election, create our own rules. We don't have to follow the state statute. Right now, we have to follow the state statute. And that's the ambiguity. Where I feel like we're in violation of it right now. Many people don't. So what, what is our next steps as a board? Are we going to ignore it? Are we going to create language that goes to an election?
Are we having a sound problem?
Yeah, just the speakers killing my ears and just asking Macy to turn that. It's, it's been long for the fastest long time.
I think one of the recommendations that Lindsay had wrote in was to just remove the whole in office and just say a person. So that it's regardless of the office or the role that they hold, that person. Say that again.
Eight years maximum with a four year break? Or, I mean. I, I mean, the state statute's a four year break. That makes sense to me. I mean, what are we going to put to the voters? What do we feel? Like, at this point, I feel like we're in violation of the state statute.
So let's, let's go ahead, Nicole. Why don't you finish your thought?
Oh, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that that, you know, that piece of her letter was pulling through and that. If we just got rid of the, the language of in office and put it to a person has a term limit. And then yes, I mean, some of the other things trusted Corvallon that like you're talking about would, you know, probably still have a break or, or remove the break. And just set it at a, a term limit of eight years or whatnot.
But you have to have a break. Otherwise, you have to have a designated break to know when they can re, renew their, you know, for the ballot. Right now, state statute, it's a four year break.
Oh, I thought you were suggesting like it's done. It's eight years. That's a no more.
I'm not suggesting that. Is that what Lindsay is suggesting? Because if that's the case, then, you know, I mean, that's a whole nother conversation. I, I mean, not that, I mean. I feel like this is an important conversation because I think term limits are important. And it's part of our democracy in the whole country. That certain people have more time and energy to put themselves towards politics than others. And if we don't have those people constantly in the rotation, it allows for new people to come in. That's all. So I guess, you know, what, what is the next step of this discussion? I mean.
I want to hear from other trustees. That's.
I mean, I'm in total agreements that it needs to be laid out very clearly. And, and what, and just like Eric said, what is good for us? As town, because not everything that applies to the bigger picture always applies to the smaller groups of people, people. Just like Boulder County making big decisions for. Netherlands that it may not apply the same as it would in a bigger town. So I'm with you. Let's make it very clear. So there's no discrepancy.
I think just backing up for a second, I think one of the questions is, do we want to put this to a vote? An election? And I would say yes. And I really like Eric's idea of the two year terms for trustees. I think that's a great idea because I think that is a huge barrier. People get freaked out by four years.
For sure.
That is a long term. I do think that there is value in having. Those longer terms so that people get experience on the board and can kind of help each other and, and train each other. But if we had. Better training when somebody gets on a board or the board, then, then the two year terms wouldn't. Be as potentially detrimental, I guess. So I think that's a great idea too. And throwing that on the election, I think would be. And, and a good idea. So both figuring out, how do we want, do, do we want to change? The term limits to reflect what we want in town, putting that to a vote. And also do we want to change the actual term? For a trustee. I think those are two things that should probably go to election.
I agree.
I'm going to go back to what I said in the first part, which is. That, that people have a vote. And I think that's super important. That if the people vote for somebody. They should be able to continue. And should they be able to continue for as long as people vote for them? I don't know, right? I mean, if I was a resident and there was somebody who was doing a great job as mayor or trustee and I. Everybody in town keeps voting for them. And then we can't vote for them anymore because term limits? I don't know, right? So. At the same time. Anticipate some future situation where. Somebody figures out how to bribe all the voters and get enough votes to continue getting elected and some shady business. And we're like, oh, we can't get rid of this guy. You know, we, we need to have some kind of safeguards. And I think this notion of. How do we put together our own system that works for Netherlands? You know, I mean, we are a small. Community. We have a small number of people who actually vote. I mean, I think, what do we get? Like four hundred and fifty people in the last referendum and it was a record? You know, so it doesn't take a lot of people to get elected. And I think that's really important that it's this, we're not talking about a large scale election. We're talking about. Couple hundred people is really all it takes. And. Maybe it's after two terms, you have to get. More than fifty percent of the votes or something, you know, like we have to, you know, the, the longer you're in there, the, the bigger your margin has to be. I mean, make up our own rules. Who says? But at the bottom line, it needs to be exceedingly clear so that we're not. In a position where somebody says you're in violation and somebody says you're not, or somebody is not clear about if they can run or if they can't, or, you know, we just. We can't have that. And, and I do think that that, that decision about what the rule is should be put to a vote. And. Personally, I don't think special election is the answer right now, just because of our budget and everything else we have on our plate for the remainder of the year. I would say let's put this together and put it on the next ballot. And, and let's do it right. Let's put it together in a, in a way that actually works for our town. And works for the residents, because that's ultimately who we serve. And so. If we want to put it to a vote that. The only term limit is whether people keep voting for you and that's what people vote for. Okay, that's what people want. It's not our decision. I feel like that's our decision and our, our job is to come up with a clear. And reasonable thing to put before the voters and let them decide. That's how I feel.
Thanks, Luke.
Can I ask a quick question to Attorney Madsen? Attorney Madsen, if we were to go down the road of home rule, this would be something that we could just write into a part of the charter. In terms of how we want the Board of Trustees to operate. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Yep. That would be one of, a recommended thing to put in the charter.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to make one quick comment on that, which is someone just recently, you know, was. Wrote, wrote the board and said, you know, is trying to link this home rule. All of a sudden, the fact that we're talking about home rule with this situation. And just to be clear, we've been talking about home rule for a while, you know, I think in. June of twenty twenty two was presented last. Other trustees from the past board talked about it. We're all for it. Numerous trustees, the majority of us were for it. So we've been talking about home rule right along. So just if you think this is linked to this term limits conversation, you're mistaken and you're welcome to look back yourself at all the meeting agendas. I mean, really, it hasn't been on the meetings a lot, but it, it come, it came up last year at the end of our strategic goals. As we're voting our strategic goals, we talked about it. So I, I mean, we talk about it pretty regularly. We talked about it in campaign events. So. I just wanted to make sure people know that this conversation is not about, you know, well, it's home rule so we can make up, you know, so we can. Pull some scam or conspiracy off. Not happening. Let's make, you know, the home rule discussion gives us a bunch of different. Things to think about, let's put it that way.
But to your point, it could also, because we've been talking about home rule for a couple of years, it could be the mechanism through which we clarify.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When you asked Jennifer that question, that, I mean, I totally agree that that's where we could. Yeah, domination, if we have a special election, maybe it's really about that more than just this one little thing that we're signaling.
It's not a little thing.
Okay, well, this one thing that we're signaling out, I, it, yeah.
Just wait for a home rule and then you wait another year for the charter to be built. You're talking about putting this off three years. Because our elections, like, what I, you know, like Luke was saying, maybe that we should just wait for a normal election to put this on. Instead of a special election because of the budget constraints. But that's like saying as if. We don't currently have a possible violation in our seven trustees at this moment. Like, it's not.
We're talking about the future and, and we're talking about the future and, and. And we're talking about the, the future.
You're talking about the future. I'm talking about now.
What we're here to talk about.
I'm talking about making that.
A home rule effort wouldn't take three years. I'm not sure we came up with that.
We, we would have a hundred and eighty days.
That we don't have a special election and we just put it on our next election. That's in a year and a half. And then you have to do the charter and blah, blah, blah. I don't know why you wouldn't. I think this is worthy of a special election ASAP. Because this is not, this is not a, a, this is not like a pontification of a possible scenario. Of hypothetical situation. We're living in a situation right this moment. Where we are possibly in violation of the state statute, but it's ambiguous and it's not clear. And the board is divided on that. And, and, and so, what is our next steps? Let's just go there, Billy.
Well, I've, I've, I've got a good, I mean, a point that we should. Keep in mind is, you know, trustee Larson was just elected with a pretty healthy number of votes. So if we're going to go back to the voters and say, hey, do you still want trustee Larson? I, I mean, it just doesn't. Well, right, well, exactly, exactly, exactly. It's not a bar, this is, this is.
Just let Luke talk, please.
This is a conceptual issue of, are we clear about our term limits or not? And I think it's pretty clear, we are not. There is ambiguity. And, but it's not a crisis, right? I mean, yes, it's ambiguous. We should definitely fix that. There's a lot of things in our code that's ambiguous. We should definitely fix those. But if, if we're trying to say we're going to pull another special election in order to ask the voters. But if, if we're trying to say we're gonna pull another special election in order to ask the voters, what will ultimately come out to be, do you want Chris Larson to stay on the board or not? It, that doesn't seem to be a, a reasonable thing to put on the town.
I think also the election would be about the future, right? Like prospectively, what do we want in the future? And we won't have another election for a new trustee next year. So it's not until 2026, I believe, that we'll have another election for a new trustee. So if we have 2025, we put it on the ballot. That's for the future. So that's for the 2026 election. That would be my understanding.
Right. And, and we, and, you know, we should make sure that it is exceedingly clear when we put it to the voters that, that we know what we're setting forward.
I have a quick question. Um, Jennifer, is there any kind of odd year November election in Boulder County that we could tag into?
Yes. You could.
We're too late, we're too late for November this year, but.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what you did for your tax increases. Um, that was 2023.
That's right. That was not your, okay. Yeah, good. So that gives us an option to, you know, tie it into an existing, um, tiding to an existing election that we can expect that would, that, you know, the vote would happen and whatever is decided would be implemented before people start running for the April 2026 election. So that's.
Okay, I just want to say one last, one last thing. And I just wanted to be clear that I'm on record that I feel like we are in Colorado state charter law violation at this moment, having a trustee on our board that is in violation of term limits as I see it and as it could be seen by a court. Um, and I just want that on record that I don't think we should continue like this. And I think we should have an election sooner than later to clear it up so that we're not in violation. And the longer you ignore it, the more votes are cast that affect the outcome of the future of the community. And I am not okay with that. And I just want that on record. Um, y'all can put this off until the next scheduled election if you want to. I know I'm in the minority here and, and I'm sorry to see that. Then I'm done. You all know how it feels.
Okay, more, more trustees have come in?
Yeah, yeah, this is, yeah, I debated whether I should say anything, if I should speak. I should come as no great surprise. I have many thoughts on this, uh, ranging from a lot of the things that have been said by other trustees, you know, the experience, the, the roles. But, you know, and, and I gotta say, I don't think I've heard my name said quite so many times in a night, uh, without having commented. So, uh, and then particularly with, you know, I'm not even gonna comment on the number of falsehoods and lies that have been stated about my decision-making processes in the past and decisions I have made. But I just do wanna, you know, say that this is, I mean, in total agree with Tierney and Luke and what you guys said and, you know, Ty about chain, you know, eliminating ambiguity. This is obviously something that doesn't come up very often. It's not, you know, something that, you know, um, well, it's just not a very common situation, not something that has come up before clearly. But I think, you know, if we do move forward down this path, we need to be very careful about, you know, the unintended consequences. And I, you know, mentioned this before about if you have somebody who has served as a trustee for a couple of terms and then has gained a great deal of experience, that means they cannot run for mayor. And you are losing that experience and the town is losing that experience. And that may be okay. That may be fine. Um, and, you know, depending on how the changes are written in either a home rule or a straightforward referendum, that could be mitigated. And I think as we move forward, we just need to be very careful that we avoid any unintended consequences in changes that we make to our own code.
Thanks, Chris. I just have a couple of things, but if folks have more to say, things I have to say, it'd be things like if we did, if and when we do put it on, it would, if and when we were to put it on a ballot, some specific things that I feel like we'd wanna, well, discuss to decide if they, that you can go on there. Um, I, I do, I'm intrigued by Eric's idea of two-year terms across the board. Would be easier if we just had one length of term. Well, at least for elected and and, you know, then I wonder, is, is three and, is three good? Or is it not enough for someone who's trustee for a while wants to be a mayor? You know, would it need to be eight or something like that? Just spitballing there. I also think we need to put it out to the voters on this, you know, does the appointed, does the midterm appointment count as a term or, you know, is that not count? So, um, to me, that appointment versus election, you know, how you got on the board matters, you know, and, and does that, does that count, um, on this tally of term limits? I don't have a strong opinion on it. I'm just thinking that would be a great thing to have the voters decide. I, I myself do like the idea of two-year terms. I see pros and cons to it. But I like the idea. I like the idea of putting that out there to the, um, voters as well. And I would almost lean towards an eighth. I mean, maybe six years and two years off would satisfy that person who was trustee for a while and then wanted to be mayor, or maybe it's eight years and four years off. Yeah, I, you know, there's a lot of details. This is gonna be, it probably needs to be a couple of questions. And they need to be written well. And yeah, and if we go down the home rule path at some point, that, that will be the time where we can, we can write them all really well. Any more discussion points? I don't know, Nicole, um, whether we want to get specific on, on any ballot language or, you know, looking at the aim, there's, you know, there's kind of a, some, you know, there's one suggested ballot language, but then there's, you know, the vote, you know, the fact that do we send it to voter decide? Seems like we're, majority at least are interested in the vote. Then there's all the realities of budget and when it will happen. So what, Nicole, what do you, what do you kind of see as the next thing to come out of this discussion?
Yeah. So, um, thank you everyone for the discussion, um, all in the attempts to clarify and simplify. I think I've heard that as a theme throughout. Um, so yeah, so I think this is, there's an opportunity here for us to figure out what we wanted, what we want to do with this. Um, there's, we could either, um, put this up to a special election. I think, you know, going into next year makes more sense if that's the path we want to take or if we want to pull this into, um, home rule and make the home rule the vote to which then, um, we go into the clarification of this. I, I could see both ways, either way working, right? Or either path. Um, so because this was just supposed to be a discussion item, I think that, um, uh, we probably bring it back up as a part of our strategic goals and see where that takes us. That would be my, my counsel.
I like it. Others?
Love it.
Strategic goals? What do you mean? How does this play into strategic goals?
Because there's a, a conversation. So if it's going to be something that we need to plan for into next year, it's a special election we need to plan for. We need to make sure that it's, um, there. But it could also, if we decide as a, as a, as a governing body that we want to pursue home rule, then that becomes also a strategic tactic in that that needs to become a part, that needs to be on the special election, um, ballot.
Okay, it seems like it's unrelated really to home rule. I mean, guess if we were home rule, we could create a million different. We're gonna rewrite our entire charter, but this is one, I, I mean, you're gonna get in the weeds. This is kind of like when we come up with one idea for town and then like, wait, let's wait for the comp plan before we finish it. I, I'm not looking forward to this getting thrown out for the next, into 18 months from now to be discussed again.
Right. So the, the question is, why, or at least in my mind, from a process standpoint, why go through the process of a special election for this one question? When there may be, that one question can be addressed in the broader conversation of home rule. And again, I totally understand, you know, we've talked about home rule over the last couple of years. We may decide in this next strategic planning that, you know, we still don't want to do it. Totally great. Um, but I think it's still either or, whether it's we're gonna go down the path of home rule or we're gonna have a special election in, or in January, um, they need, it needs to be a part of our discussion, um, strategic goals in my mind.
Because you want to.
And that discussion is gonna happen, and that discussion, our strategic goals discussion is gonna happen pretty soon, you know, where I think.
Yeah, like in the next month.
Next, yeah.
Yeah.
Next couple of months, next few months, yeah.
Yeah, next few months.
Is it because you want to maximize the special election by having two things on it?
Potentially, or we get, or we get the goal met. Like, let's say if we decide to go down the route of home rule, we get this piece clarified as a part of that process, right?
It'd be nice to have that as an election discussion so that it's not just nine people on the Home Rule Committee writing up a charter with what they think term limits.
But that goes to public. Do you remember?
We're gonna have a special election for home rule. It would be nice to have this item on there as well. I wouldn't like to leave that to nine people to write the charter about term limits.
That's, that's how it works, Tanya. And people vote for nine people. Nine people write the charter and then, and then the charter, if I could finish, the charter goes to everyone and people vote on it. So it's not like nine people just write the Bible and, and that's how it's gonna be.
I understand. But Billy, we're talking about this specific discussion issue. Why wouldn't you have that on the same ballot as do you want to go home rule? And then also have these items that were brought up about appointment and term limits on that same ballot? Sure. Why would you not have those decisions already made? So that if there were a home rule charter made, those people who write those charter would know what the majority of people are thinking. Versus bringing in a whole charter and having to be like, well, I like this, but not this about term limits. And then have to get the sentence all the way back. Doesn't make any sense.
So, Tanya, that's, that's perfectly fine because if the home rule question on the ballot fails, then the backup is that we've got that going into our statutory code for codification.
I don't even know why we're talking about home rule right now. We're talking about term limits. Do we want to have an item on an election that relates to the term limits or not?
And what we're saying is yes, yes to both.
But I don't even know why home rule is even in this conversation right now, other than the fact that we could put it on the same election.
That's one, that's one advantage. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. Why would we spend $8,000 and two separate special elections?
Well, right, but then come back with another discussion item about home rule again. I mean.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, that was already, that was already, there was a not a four for that to happen, yeah.
Yeah, and it's gonna be part of our stra-